All right. I'm going to call the Dunsmere State Council Regular Meeting for January 17th, 2019 to order. I would like to go through -- Julie, are you going to do your roll call? Okay, perfect, go ahead.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Present.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
And so we're all present.
Present. We'll stand for the flag salute. Councilmember Art, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unafraid, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move into item number four, which is approval of the agenda. I actually have been notified of a needed change to the agenda. The item 13B, wastewater treatment plant improvements project, which is found on page two of the Agenda Packet on the back page of the Agenda, that has a public hearing that was noticed for the CEQA mitigated negative degradation. So we're going to move that to Section 11 for the public hearing so that that is properly recorded as a public hearing for that California Environmental Quality Act public hearing. Is there any issue with that move?
For Governor, 13B.
13B to 11.
13B.
Agreed.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right. There's a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing that, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda for the January 17th regular council meeting in 2019 with the amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sentenced. The agenda passed. That was first motioned by Councilmember Kaiser, seconded by Councilmember Deutsch. All in favor? Wonderful. Move on to approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of December 20th, 2018.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December 20th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Question?
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing then, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular meeting of December 20th, 2018 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion passes. It was a motion by Councilmember Kaiser, seconded by Councilmember Art. All in favor? We will move into presentations and we will start with the Land Best Fuel Break Project and discussion on the letter of support.
Okay, thanks. City council members, does anybody want a copy of the presentation?
It's in our Agenda Packet.
Okay, great. I have ten of the copies of all I made. Want you to take mine over? Anybody that wants one, just email me. I gave my card to the planner and anybody that wants one, I will email you a PDF.
If you could please keep the noise down so that we can do the presentation, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
My name's Arty Hult, and I live in Mount Shasta. I'm a newcomer here. Been here since '87, so.
Are you?
Could you spell the last name? Yeah. Hult, T-A-R-T-Y. Okay, I work with Land Best and he essentially took over management of the lands when Roseburg sold them just about a year ago today. So what we're trying to do today is we were hoping to get support from the city council for a California climate investment project, which involves two things. One of them is going to be a series of fuel breaks along the May, Bradley, and Sota Ridge side around I-5. And the other one would be a conservation easement, which would dedicate the lands approximately about a mile on either side of I-5 perpetually as a working forest. So it couldn't be subdivided or anything else. So that's what we're trying to do. Of interest to you, it's going to be the information that I'm going to provide that tells you some detail about what's going to happen. Since you all were interested in how your watershed, your few shed looks, that's why we're here, because we want to make sure that you have any questions. Long story short, Roseburg's own bunch of land throughout Siskiyou and Shasta County, they decided to redeploy their capital in another form. And so there was a company called New Forest, which is an Australian company, purchased land. And so they are interested in operating forest lands certified by foresters and contractors. If any of you are familiar with FSC certification, then that probably helps me to know about the standards of forest management that we practice. Anyway, we are working with the Trust for Public Lands, which is a well-known, large public organization, as well as the Shasta Land Trust, to put together a conservation easement and a grant application for this project. So what we have there is a map from your general plan. That big squiggly line you recognize is Interstate 5. The city limits are, if you know where they are, they're kind of like a jigsaw puzzle around Interstate 5. And then the area around it kind of approximates the sphere of influence, is how it's termed. Oh, thank you. I have to hear something. Okay. So this is the sphere of influence, which every general plan is required to have. This is the city limits in here, and then you can see that cloud. So moving on. This is from your community wildfire prevention plan, which was done by your fire safety council. Julie Titus, Forest Service Battalion Commander, retired, helped do this. What this is, is this is the area of what's called the wooing, or woodland-urban interface. And that's the area where you've got, well, lack of a better word, interface between people and the forest. The biggest problem, obviously, is that, like what happened in Paradise, if the forest catches on fire, the houses catch on fire. Or, from my standpoint, if the houses catch on fire, the forest catches on fire. We don't want either of those to happen. So this is an example of the area of influence for the community wildfire protection plan. Next item there is the, that's the CAL FIRE risk assessment for the area. And you can see that the risk assessment for Dunsmere doesn't look too shiny. It's potentially probably as potentially bad as it would be prepared as. The only advantage that we have is that we have probably more roads to get in and out. But that only does you good if you're fleeing from your house. But that's to give you an example of the boat that we're in right now. About 100 years ago, that's what Dunsmere looked like, highly different. This big square area that you see there is approximately behind the high school. Here's Dunsmere Avenue. We're just right along, probably right about there. The railroad's down here. And so that's just kind of interesting to give you perspective on how the landscape has changed over time. That's the mott area in the city. Not too many trees there. But again, that was a product of the fires that we had around the turn of the century. So it's changed a lot. So fire exclusion, it's taken us 100 years to get to where the landscape's overgrown. It's going to take us 100 years to get out of that. What we need to do, though, is to use the existing features of the landscape, primarily the ridges, existing roads, hillside, things like that. And we will put in a network of fuel breaks, which will be approximately 300 feet wide. Now, fuel break, if you've been down to LA in the Chaparral area, it's like a wide lawn mower strip that is, there's nothing there. Here, what we do, they're called shaded fuel breaks, in which leave a number of trees to essentially shade out the area and to stop the brush from growing in too quickly. But the idea is that you need to space the trees out so that they don't catch on fire, catch each other on fire, which is called a crown fire. That's what happened in Paradise. Now, full disclosure, if you have dry conditions, red-black conditions, and 50 mile an hour winds, not a fuel break in the world is going to stop anything. But barring that condition, with a network of fuel breaks, we've talked with CAL FIRE and other fire people, and they say that a 300-foot-wide fuel break is something that they would feel comfortable with at least defending from. So if that's what they're willing to defend from, then we, well, we didn't think about ourselves, so that's what the idea is. I'm going to show you a map of, well, before I show you the map, this is a typical piece of equipment called a masticator. And it runs on a self-leveling cap. And what it does is that it essentially grinds up the brush and everything. And what that does is that it makes it so that the fire's not going to carry if all that fuel is ground on there.
What'd you call that?
A masticator.
I like the sentence.
A mower. It's a big mower, hey?
I like that.
It's a heck of a big mower. So this is, this is an area that had been planted in 1992. They took it through here and essentially ground up all the brush. And so here's an example of shaded fuel break. It's not this big strip that is devoid of all vegetation.
That's the 300-foot wall we're talking about there? I mean, would it look like that?
Yeah, yeah, that's not 300 feet wide. That's, you clear it out like that with that type of tree retention, and it would be 300 feet wide. The other half of it is a conservation easement, in which it spells out what we can do and what we can't do in this first phase, that if we get it funded, all the area within view of Dunsmere and I-5 is going to go to what's called uneven-aged or continuous cover forestry. So for lack of a better word, you might call it selection or thinning. It comes under a lot of different categories, so that's, that's the primary idea, is to soften the visual impact. It would also permanently dedicate the land to a working forest forever. It's not going to be subdivided, and nobody's going to be putting in homesteads or ranchettes or anything. It's going to be a working forest forever.
No, no visual clear cuts, just thinning?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So what you have seen up to now, that those are clear cuts, so-called fuzzy clear cuts, where we've left 10% of the previous stand in either blocks or spread out. The idea is to soften the look and also to, you know, to help what's left there grow back quicker. So those are all replanted. Everything you see is replanted within a year. You just can't see the little trees.
But this is a reduction of the risk of fire?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, and I mean, the clear cut itself is a reduction of fire, because there's nothing there to burn.
Okay.
Just to be totally frank.
And so what will it look like driving or moving around in town after the clear cuts are replaced? I'm talking about?
No, well, if we got this, there would be no clear cuts, as you have seen them now. That would.
See, that's what we're trying to get at. Aesthetically, that's hideous. It's ugly. But if you're going to fit it, you're going to do that, but not since like a patch on an animal that's been shaved.
Yes.
Because that's what they've done in the past. That's what I'm trying to do, because that's what a lot of people wanted to know, was like, are we giving bald spots again to the forest?
No, so that's what's not going to happen.
That's what we wanted to hear.
Okay. Okay, so anyway, the forest legacy, it's, would be supervised by the Shasta Land Trust. Trust for Public Lands would put together the performance standards. And the main thing is that a lot of the areas wouldn't be cut at all. If you know where Black Bear Creek is, over there up by Scarlet Way and Shasta Tree, that would be a total late cereal reserve, nothing, no harvest there at all. So that's the long and short of it. Here's the area that we're talking about. The area in green would be the project area of Phase 1, so that's about 800 acres. These lines that you see are the roads that will have the shaded fuel breaks put in. The purple lines are going to be ridges where the shaded fuel breaks will be put in, but there's no roads there. So this is down by the sewer plant right here. This is like by Black Bear Hill Road. This comes down like by the softball area, and this comes down like by May Springs up past the airport.
We're going to save questions for the public later.
Yeah, sorry, okay. Okay, so here's the, who typed this up? So all the area that is visible from I-5 and Dunsmere is the, is this kind of odd-looking line.
Caddy.
Yeah, kind of like a baby pew mower. That's, that is going to be dedicated for what's called few shed, and so that's the area of the continuous cover forestry, single tree selection, no patches. This is a late cereal, early cereal. It's not going to have any cutting going on there at all. This is some what they call Montane hardwood areas in here, up there around near Snowman's Hill. Same deal, those are areas that would be maintained as they are with no agricultural activity at all. And then over the ridge, on the backside, we would continue to do forest management as it is in the Forest Leadership Council with 10% retention. So that's, that's how conservation easement would shake out. So I'm done.
So just to cover protocol, so presentations, we're going to go through all of the presentations, and during item number eight of announcements and general public comment, we'll take questions, comments about the presentations themselves. So I'm going to open up for council questions at this point.
That baby pew green that we was talking about.
Okay.
Am I correct in that, am I, did I get it right? I don't like the word assuming, so did I get it right when the masticated, like that, the masticated part would be that baby pew green part?
No.
No?
No, that would be timber activities, timber harvesting, only it would be single tree selection.
Just a thinning?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So whatever you want to call it, you want to know what it looks like? Go up Sota Creek, just past the last house, Nantes, over the bridge, and that area in there was, was single tree selection.
Okay.
And is the selection, was it 16 inches or 24 inches as far as like the size that you'll be selecting?
You will select across the entire diameter distribution, from 30 inches down to 14 inches. Anything over 30 inches is hands-off. That will stay.
That's right.
So if you get large tree retention.
Do you have a rough estimate of the percentage reduction in the number of trees?
It would probably be half to two-thirds, depending on the size of the trees. If it's bigger trees, you don't have to take very many to get to your basal area. If they're little trees, you have to take more of the mountain wood to achieve the stopping.
I do have a couple of questions. First of all, this, I'm assuming also includes getting rid of any brush as you're going through this for the green area here? In other words, there's a lot of dead brush around, is that going to be cleared out or not?
Yeah, well, it's the masticator, it is the masticator grinds it up, it lays on the forest floor, it decomposes quicker because it's down there in an area of higher moisture, less air circulation, so it decomposes, and it's, it's hard to get it to burn. So that's how it's disposed. It's kind of like chipping plates.
But the masticator isn't going through there, so I'm saying in that area there, as you're fitting it, are you also going to be taking out dead brush?
No, no, you have such a de minimis amount, that amount that is the, like the tree branches, the treetops, because you're taking so few trees, the amount that's left there kind of melts into the forest floor. Here's the only place where it's going to be masticated.
That's what I thought, right.
Right, right there.
Those green, the purple lines?
Well, you have the purple lines and the red ones.
Second question I had is, I think everyone right now is looking at this from a perspective of will we be ready for the next fire season? So when do you see something, what's the timeline for this?
I'll start April or May, as soon as the, as soon as it's drying up, as soon as we get to Brian.
How long is the project going to take?
Probably two years at least. It's going to take a long time. That's essentially 42 miles of fuel break. A lot of work.
So similar to the questions that Councilmember Deutsch was asking about, you know, the fuel, so you're basically just going to leave the fuel on the ground? You're not going to do any pile burning?
No.
No?
It's not necessary. It's what's called lop and scattered. So if you were cutting all the trees in the sand, you would have a lot of slash left. In a selection-type sort of culture, you have such a de minimis amount left that it's not a fuel concentration that will result in ignition component that you need to really get a good fire going. You need lots of stuff to burn to get a good fire going. And so this isn't enough to.
So the amount of stuff throughout the trees, by taking out the trees, you're just sending out the trees, there's not that much stuff growing there anyway, so we're not adding to the potential, we're not increasing the threat, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So I'll go over to Redwood Park as you're driving up to the Bradley Gate, that hillside there, that was all selected and logged.
Okay.
And so if you want to know what the slash load's going to look like, that's it.
All right.
Same thing with Sota Creek, if you get up past Nantes, past the third ridge, second ridge. Between there and Cater Flack, between the secondary and Cater Flack.
Councilmember Art, do you have any questions at this time?
Two comments and a couple of questions. Comment one is the high following of your presentation. It's very important to everybody here to start to make reassurance about what's going to happen. The second is, I see in the body of our agenda that you've worked with our fire chief, and our fire chief supports what you're proposing. Does that sound correct?
Yes, and he was, he was weighing in mainly on the fuel break part of it. The other forestry, conservation easement, that's not what he was concerned about.
Sort of on that point, the last item on our agenda tonight is the creation of a natural disaster recovery committee, and I'm going to be a member of that committee. I'm big on partnerships. So as the city of Dunsmere comes up with how we're going to manage vegetation and evacuation and all of the aspects that we learned from Paradise, how do we coordinate? Would you be part of our working group for the state-owned forests and federal-owned forests? Is there, are you all coordinated, or what is the interaction as we go into 2019 fire season?
We try to be coordinated, but we're not. If you invite us to come to the table with you and to participate, we're than happy to do so. I've worked on this land since '87, and so, you know, I'm here, no matter who I'm working for, I'm here.
You gave me what I wanted, which is, you know, as we do the overlay now, we need to assure everybody from their home in Dunsmere to however far out in the direction of the clouds, south, north, and west. So thank you very much. We're going to be working with you.
Any other questions from council members? My final question is, you did mention chemical treatment for long-term plan. Could you maybe talk about multi-year long-term plan as far as how, how this proposal fits into that management of the land? A lot of the issues that I have a concern with is when people go in and do fuel breaks, and then they don't maintain them because they think they're okay. Unfortunately, forests grow and can repopulate and become a problem again, so I'm curious what the long-term plan is.
The long-term plan is to go through, do the treatment, and then that next year, take a look at it, see what grows back, see how fast it grows back. Looks good, what we did it the next year. And depending on where you are, if you've got a shaded fuel break, the shade's going to suppress a lot of the stuff that wants to grow back. In the areas where there's no shade, like, you know, the bear ridges on the very top of Bradley, you know, that man's need it, it'll be back with the vengeance.
Yeah.
And so we'll look at what needs to be done at that time. We may bring a masticator through at that time. Chemical treatments are a possibility, but they are highly regulated, first with the EPA and then with California, State of California. It's just, it's extremely regulated, is all I got to tell you.
So you would rather use physical manipulation rather than chemical?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Or a combination of them. It's like integrated testing. You know, we use the best, most effective tool for the job, and that means also environmental impact.
Thank you. So seeing no other questions, we'll, thank you for that. We enjoyed it very much. As I said before, we'll open up public comment related to these presentations. And then the letter for support is on our consent agenda. So we'll be taking comments and related to that at item number eight on your agenda, as if you're following. So now we'll invite up the South Siskiess Lions Club. They're going to give a presentation on the Hedge Creek Falls Waterfront Repair Project, which councilmembers did receive a packet about that.
Hello. I gave Julie a packet that she can pass around. Karen O'Quinn. Excellent. Good job. Thank you, Julie. So this is Chris, who's part of our Lions Club, and Chrissy, who's also part of our Lions Club. And I think you all know me, Karen O'Quinn, Dunsmere librarian. And, thank you.
Madam Librarian.
Thank you. I'm the madam of the library. I'm the book tender. So we're proposing a restoration project of the Hedge Creek Falls drinking fountain located near the visitor's entrance. In 1987, the Dunsmere Lions Club donated and built the drinking fountain, which is currently working, but badly in need of restoration and ongoing maintenance. We're proposing a complete tear down and rebuild with multi-level spouts for adults, children, as well as a lower spout for pets, like a basin. As for the rock and the specific design layout, we hope to work closely with the Dunsmere community and high school students by offering a fountain design contest with donated prizes and recognition. We're looking at River Rock or Flagstone, which is in the packet, a couple of examples that we may use. The project will be supported and completed by our South Siskiess Lions Club volunteers and other community members that are interested at no cost to the city of Dunsmere. So we're asking the city of Dunsmere for your approval before we proceed with our project to redesign, rebuild, and repair the existing fountain. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer what I can.
All right. So looking at our agenda, we don't have a letter of support yet on the agenda, but I think after this presentation, we'll get, I believe, working with Mark, we can do that on the consent agenda at the next meeting?
I think that we make a motion on this or not?
No, technically, presentations are not action items. So if we have any questions right now, it's appropriate not to ask the questions, but you don't-
Later on, we can make action.
Yeah. What you can do is request to put it on the future agenda as a formal action item. That's why I said, you know, if we are in support, generally, we'll have that drafted for a formal approval.
Why don't we try to smile, Peter?
Yeah. Councilmember Kaiser.
Just when the day comes, jump in.
Thank you, Big Dave. Thank you very much. We have, you probably saw in the packet, there are about 15 other entities in our community that want to help us, in one way or another. And anybody who's interested, come on down.
Council-
Karen, I do have one question.
Yes.
So I'm curious, have you wrapped this into your vision that it's going to soon become the trailhead for the Mossbury Trail? Is that part of your vision and understanding of what that will be a part of there?
Well, at this point in time, it's just the fountain.
No, what I'm saying is, the fountain that will now become that beautiful thing as everyone goes down to the Mossbury-
Exactly.
Not down, fountain.
Fountain. Fountain. Yes. I'm sure that it will present a much more, or a more beautiful entrance to Hedge Creek Falls.
Thank you. Councilmember Art, do you have a question?
Thank you. Jurisdictionally, is a point of jurisdiction, the site that the fountain sits on, is that city? Is that Park and Rec?
I talked to, I can answer that. I talked to Mike Rodriguez, and he said it is definitely the city. Park and Rec does not have much to do with that area at this point in time.
I totally agree that the city having 30-year, I don't know, council, former councilmember Craig is here or not, but the miracle of the Mossbury Trail, it will be an integrated project for hikers and visitors. So the more we can socialize the upgrade and the trailhead, perhaps there's some funds there and some synergies, because Trail Association has put hundreds of thousands of dollars into this project.
I agree.
Thank you. Any other questions for right now? I would just have to say, I appreciate that you're putting in a dog bum. It's really hard to lift up my 86-pound lab pit bull. And he doesn't like doing that either, so I appreciate that. So I would advise you to work with City Manager Brannigan to draft a letter of support, and we would love to see that at the next meeting for us to decide on.
Thank you so much.
One other little bit to add to this. I know that it didn't happen last year, but I know that the Rotary Club had set out to kind of take care of the area that used to be covered by the garden club there, and also kind of refresh the railroad sign. So getting together with the Rotary Club at one of the meetings and going over that with them might be able, we'd be a way to kind of get the energy going at the same time.
Good idea. Thank you so much.
Wednesday mornings, 7 o'clock, elementary school.
Do I find, do I have any questions?
Do they feed us?
Okay. Okay. You ever play with the Michaela Brothers? Sure. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for today? All right. We will hopefully see you back here at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move into our final presentation, which is certificates of appreciation for our prior mayor and city council members. I don't know if we have any of our prior council members in the room, if you are.
Hey, Josh.
If you want to come in, we will do that. Julie, do you have those certificates? Sure. Well, we'll talk about it, and then we'll, yeah, we have them in here. So the city council at the last meeting had talked about presenting certificates of appreciation for previous public servants who had served on the council. And, you know, this is a volunteer position. We do not get paid for this, and it takes a lot of time out of your schedule to do these things. So I got them. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Deutsch. And since Julie will get the certificates afterwards, but I will shake your hand, because I wish I could.
You guys want to roll this at the same time?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're in your-
Give these, give these, give them.
A pack. Yeah, you can steal, you can, well, they're printed back and forth, so they'll have to find over one of these things.
Here. You got, here. Oh, no, we got the same thing. Don't listen.
So on behalf of the, I'll do it at this one, so turn the microphone. So on behalf of the city council of the city of Dunsmere, we want to appreciate you, Bruce Deutsch, for your services, mayor, for the last year. So thank you so much for doing that. And I know Josh, Bryce isn't here, but I do want to make sure that we talk about his service. So Bryce Craig had served as a city council member for the city of Dunsmere from 2014 to 2018. And so we want to appreciate his service, working on the broadband committees, working on economic development, and, you know, overall, just being, you know, a great citizen of the city of Dunsmere. So-
And a mayor, a mayor as well.
And a mayor as well. Thank you. And then Josh, and thank you so much for your selfless service. One, not only as a city council member, but as a firefighter for the city of Dunsmere. Thank you for your service from 2014 to 2018. And I believe you were the youngest mayor ever. So I don't have that title. So, and finally, we do want to recognize Madheshakta for her service on the city council. She was appointed specially. There were a couple of turnovers for members. And so we want to acknowledge her service from 2016, 2018, as a council member for the city of Dunsmere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can actually leave with whatever you want now. The rest of us are stuck. All right. Thank you, guys, for that moment.
Thank you. And thank Mr. Bryan for that suggestion to do that. That was nice of him to do that last meeting.
So I'm going to move us forward through our agenda to committee reports.
Good. Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
We need you to address the first presentator. I'd like to give him a hand for his presentation, and he has the right to public comment.
Yep, at item number eight.
At item number eight?
Yes.
I don't usually have a question during the meeting.
So going to, item number seven, committee reports. Are there any committee reports that people would like to state right now?
I'd like to talk about the airport committee. We're in the process, in fact, Mark, why don't you take it? Because I think you were, you want to go in there. Okay, so, right now, we're holding our breath. We're sitting on a possibility of any day now being able to get a $2.5 to $3 million grant with no match, which would mean that normally, the way the airport functions, every year, the federal government gives us $150,000. If we don't use that, you can save it up to $600,000. And then after that, it starts rolling. So the trouble is, to redo our runway up there, they estimate it to be about $2.5 to $3 million. And of course, there's no way a city like us could be able to do that. And so it turns out that the federal government recently came up with $2 billion or $1 billion?
$1 billion.
$1 billion that was supplemental and was designed to take the airports that were ready to go, that had a terrible set of runways and were in a bad condition. And the good news, bad news is, or the bad news, good news is, we have a terrible situation, which means we're really high on the list of getting the grant. We've been working with Congressman Lamafa's office to make sure that all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. And so any day now, we may be finding that out, in which case, we'll have some sort of bubbly beverage to celebrate with. Just to put that in perspective, so far, since 2015, when we started bringing the airport back together again, we've essentially had to put in a loan for $32,000. Yet that loan brings us $2 million plus the $342,000 we got out of it. That's a pretty good return on the investment. So I'm really excited, and the airport looks like it's bright looking forward. That's all I can say.
Are there any questions for Councilmember Deutsch?
Well, I have abandoned all my San Francisco ways, so I still subscribe to the San Francisco Chronicle. And I want to hand over to the members of the airport committee a fairly lengthy article that looks to the future of passenger transportation, and notes that there are three major entrepreneurs, Lyft, Uber, and Elon Musk. And they are in the development stage of drone-powered people movers, essentially a pod that would carry 10 to 12 passengers. And all you would need is your sub-regional airport is an electric charging station, has a passenger facility. And there are several sub-regional airports in California that have told the FAA, we don't want to do pipers and sessions, but we're willing to do this. And the FAA has said, fine. And the FAA is now granting funds to these airports to get ready for the future. So it is an option.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Councilmember Deutsch?
Thank you, sir.
Seeing none, are there any other committee reports?
The finance committee did meet, Madam Mayor. We began, we complete our committee review with your budget review. Things that stand out initially on that, as prior to the mention, is reduced TOT and TUT taxes, as well as the gap in the water bottle plant. All that is involved in this town. Those are things that will be addressed by city council in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Councilmember Bryan? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any other committee reports?
One question. Has the protocol committee yet?
We are going to. So just for the general public, so Councilmember Bryan and I are doing, are on an ad hoc committee, looking at committee protocols as well as city council protocols, at the same time we do pre-agenda, where we look at future agenda items and where they get scheduled. So we had a couple of conflicts before this meeting, but my understanding is we'll probably find a meeting in the next week or so to start that process.
Thank you. One question I have is that, as we're looking at this right now, I'd like to see if we could have on the agenda this conversation about standing committees, ad hoc committees, which one is better for our situations. I had a conversation with the mayor about this and the committees that I work on. And so I'm open to the idea that rather than have, for instance, the airport committee as a standing committee, being an ad hoc committee. And so I'd like to have that on the agenda next time around, so we could address that. And I think that will help us move along then.
Yeah, we'll take that into account. And I actually had it planned in my notes to have a general discussion about that during the disaster planning advisory committee, just to bring that up as a point, so that we can have that as something the public can participate in.
Yeah, might I suggest that we overview all the committees and structures for each. I think similarly to what you and councilmember are prepared for the natural disaster planning commission, our committee, we just adopt protocols for each admission statement, a resolution forming each, essentially.
I agree.
We can discuss that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
One more thing for the economic development committee. The mayor and I agreed to have a brief meeting with the representative for our hometown utility. And one of the topics he brought up is apparently the state of California just released a pot of money to his utility for electric vehicle charging stations. The money is available. All the city has to do is apply.
I wanted to get one across the street, for sure.
PacificPower.net.
I would also recommend contacting Siskiess Economic Development Council about that, because they've been facilitating the electric charging station program along the I-5. And they would have more information about that. So I would recommend that, too.
Okay, thank you. And since we brought up economic development, it just brought the idea that, I want to let you know that we are getting ready to have a meeting. And what we anticipate doing in February is coming up with a presentation on our vision of the industrial park to the east of the airport.
Okay.
So that's what we're working on. We haven't come up with a date right now, but we'll be coming back with that in February.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, not in the capacity as a committee, but I did meet with the owner of the Travelers Hotel and welcoming them to the town. They're very excited to be here. They express, just as you know, the desire that the commercial spaces in the bottom story, be filled with local businesses. They're interested in first turning to the community that they're coming to and seeing if they can foster business within our own community before bringing outside businesses in. But that was exciting, and they said they were very interested in offering affordable rates in the initial stage of business. So if anyone is interested in that, get in touch with them. Great job.
Thank you. I'm just here to remind the council that item number nine is announcements and reports with councilmembers that are not typically committee reports, so we'll keep those there. Finally, any other committee reports? I'm just going to bring up, Councilmember Art and I did meet regarding the natural disaster task force, and then the fruition of that meeting is coming to this as an action item. So we'll report on more there. Seeing nothing else, we will now move into announcements and public comment from the general public. This is the time to talk about something that is not scheduled on the agenda, as well as items that are on the consent agenda, which is item number 10, which would be the Landvest fuel break letter check registry. Also, if you have any comments or questions about the committee report section or presentations, this is the time to bring those things up. If you are speaking to the public hearings on the campus zoning ordinance, or the brewery code amendment, or any of the other projects at the end of our meeting, we will have another public comment specifically for each of those items for you to speak on. So we open this up for just general comments. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone, you'll have three minutes for your general public comment.
Hi, this is Carol Schrein.
Please speak into the mic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question for the gentleman who had the presentation. Do you have like a prioritize, like where you're going to start working? And have you identified the highest-risk areas in the forest damage rate project that you're doing to the fire mitigation?
Yes. I'm going to start in the north, by the Mott Airport, and work this way, trying to get the easy ground first, and to put some points on the board, and then to move along the mid-slope roads above this town of Dunsmere on the west side, because most all the homes are on this side of the river. And so that would be the absolute first priority.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Just for the record, he said north, moving to, starting in the north, moving towards Dunsmere.
South, yeah.
Well, that's south.
I'll start up by the airport, by Highway 89, and then move towards town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Arlene Dinjas, the planning consultant. And I did have a question about the Landvest presentation. Thank you very much. It was positive and thorough. I have a question as to whether the easement, the conservation easement, is going to overlap any privately-owned property that is zoned R1 or any other zone, and how that might impact private landowners' development rights. So I'd like, I'm wondering if we have a chance to talk about that before we adopt a letter of support.
Can I board out a short answer?
Yes.
Okay. No, it's only Landvest land, and it's only a willing seller, willing buyer. So it's just us only. Nobody else gets affected by it.
Thank you.
Leslie Wilde, 6200 Eleanor Street. I'm here to talk about a couple of things. The first one is, I attended a finance committee meeting the other day, and I attended because I attend quite a few finance committee meetings. I used to be on the finance committee. And our audit came back, the city of Dunsmere's audit came back recently, and it had some issues and problems. So I look forward to attending my first finance committee meeting with the new council members that were going to be on this committee. And I was disappointed that instead of being held in this room with a decorum that comes with a standing committee, it was once again held in a small venue. This time, it was a little improvement. It was held in a conference room. But I still think the standing committees that must adhere to the Brown Act should be held in a room such as this. The last meeting was held at a conference table, where members often sit with their backs to you, which is an improvement, because it used to be held in the kitchen of the city hall, which was really inappropriate. But something happened at that finance committee that I wanted to share with this council that I thought was alarming, that the city manager announced that the council members that chaired the committee couldn't chair the committee, and they couldn't add things to the agenda. And that should be alarming. That's a big red flag. And I think, I hope, I heard the mayor say that they're going to address some of the finance committees or all the committees, and they're going to maybe have a mission statement for each one. So I'm looking forward to the next finance committee meeting, hopefully being in this room. And I would like to see whoever chairs it, Matthew or Peter, that there's an agenda that they follow, including public comments. And the last thing I'm going to say is, in 2012, when Dave Keisler was elected to this council, he used to sit over there, because the mayor sits in the middle. And then when he became the mayor, he moved to the middle. But now I notice that when he's not the mayor, he still sits in the middle, and it bothers me. And I know that, I think that Juliana is, I think you're a rock star. I think you're the Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez of Dunsmere. But when you acquiesce your power, what you say to women and girls who want to accede to politics is that even if you're elected mayor with the largest vote total of anyone that's ever been elected in Dunsmere, you don't get to sit in the middle. You don't get to sit in the seat of power. And I ask you, Dave Keisler, to be a bigger person and move out of that chair and allow the mayor to sit there. Be the bigger person.
Wherever she sits, it's the seat of power.
Then why do you sit in the middle? Why did you choose to move from the side to the middle? The Mount Shasta protocols actually address this issue. And I know that you're working on protocols, and I hope that you might have to revisit that and actually institute a protocol that says the mayor sits in the middle. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor and City Councilman. My name is Megan Miguel, and I am a homeowner and full-time resident in North Dunsmere. I'm here tonight to express my concern over the broken fire horn in North Dunsmere. I've lived here for two and a half years, and it has not worked during that time. I was told that parts have been hard to find for it. I would ask that if it cannot be fixed, that maybe the city could look into getting a new one. I think this is just too important to leave it to chance, and I would totally be willing to help out with this if my help was needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other general public comments about items not on the agenda?
Christopher Collins, 5742 Sacramento Avenue, number six. I just wanted to clarify on the fuel break thing, did you say it was an Australian company that was managing it now?
It's a San Francisco company, it's affiliated with an Australian company. Land Vest is an American company that's actually doing the management, so it's like a lot of things, it's, the subsidiary is an American company owned by an Australian company managed by a New England company.
Thank you.
City Council, I had a recent chance to attend a financial meeting as well, where we're gonna download, basically the finances of the city, we're halfway through the year. Mr. Art, it's with no animus, personally I like you, I really appreciate the things you've done for the community. I also know that drug dealers and mafiosos do nice things for the communities to curry favor. It's very disappointing for me to have to announce, but I was approached to create a committee to look into and start a recall on Mr. Art, and I want to notify you guys that that's coming.
Thank you. Is there any other general public comment about items that are not on the agenda or on the consent or part of the presentation?
Michael Bush, Butterfly Avenue. I wasn't gonna get up here on the general comment, but I, what I wanted to say was that, wow, there is so much on this agenda, and it's really, really hard to follow it. I went into, that's not your fault, but I mean it's just so much, it's a hundred-page packet, and I question, you know, whether the people can really follow a lot of this. I've said this to other city councils in the past, they put so much on the agenda that it's difficult for people, you know, ordinary citizens to follow it and to keep up with stuff. For example, now people are talking, they're asking about the Land Vest when they're supposed to be doing general comment. People just can't follow it, there's just so much. There's two huge issues, what's going on with the forests, the fuel breaks, and the marijuana, you know, it's just, and it's packed, and I'm sitting in the back, and you can't see it, but people have come in the door and just looked around and left. They've left the meeting. So, people are having trouble with, you know, putting so much on the agenda that it's just hard for normal people to understand it. You know all the protocol, you know how everything works, you know how things go when you're supposed to speak, but a lot of people don't. And so I just think, bottom line is, please go a little easier on these agendas, these hundred packet ones, you can see the room is filled, it's just so overwhelming to most people. And the whole idea is we live in a democracy, and you're supposed to hear from us tell you what we want, not, you know, you guys make the decisions, from us, you're supposed to hear from us. There's so much on the packet that it's just really overwhelming for most people, and even a few minutes with Land Vest talking about this, I question whether most people in here got anything of what's going on. I think you guys understand it because you read the packet, but, you know, what is really going on, what are they gonna do, where are they gonna be doing the pitting and the masticating? It's just overwhelming, this big of a packet. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I will move to the general public comment, and we'll move into item number nine, which is announcements and reports from the council and staff. I'm just, I'm gonna start really quick, just because city manager Brandon and I did share some email correspondence about committee meetings. All committee meetings will be hosted in here if they are a standing committee from now on, just to deal with the locational factors. There was an issue that there should have been a notice posted for the airport committee moving, but we are going to improve that, we are going to have a meeting here and move forward with that. So I just wanted to address that one really quick before we go into questions and discussions. So, I'm gonna hand it over to you, city manager Brandon, for any type of report you have for the council right now.
Just two, two items to report. One, we were expecting the Chinese educators coming from a sister city of Dunsmere, Quijin, that's actually visiting the College of the Siskus. There's a program where they're looking at kind of a higher education program with the College of Siskus, and a possibility of a trade program with some of the schools in a smaller sense. They've been, they came in on Monday, they've been running through a program that's been pretty intense. They were scheduled to come to Dunsmere, they are scheduled to come to Dunsmere on Friday, tomorrow, but they scaled back that, what they had planned, because they're looking to spend a little bit more time with the host families. So a lot of these educators that have come here are staying in people's homes, and they've had such a tight schedule, they really haven't had time to really stop and thank their hosts. So, they will be coming here tomorrow, they'll be at the high school for lunch and doing a presentation. We were scheduled to have them come to city hall and then take them on a tour of the Hedge Creek Falls and Botanical Garden, that is not gonna take place, they're gonna cut their visit to Dunsmere short, and the weather's been another issue, is all the outdoor activity. So, we have that changed in plans. The other item I just wanted to announce is, we had a very substantial major water main break on Shasta. We have sections of the pipe in city hall for the council to come in and take a look at, and also the public if they want to see what happened. This was the second break in three years, and it's a cast iron pipe that has cracked and is blown out, and it just made some serious problems to the road. We've had case of engineering come out and take a look at the area, because we're looking at recommendations on what to do going forward. We're concerned about the remaining part of the pipe that's in place, we believe there's an issue with the bedding and possibly with the connections of the pipe because it keeps breaking at the bells. But if someone wants to see what caused that major water main break, the pipe is located, as you walk into city hall, you'll see the counters just to the left. So, come on in, and if you have questions, please let me know.
It likely was installed in 1941.
Are there any questions for city manager Brandon? Thank you. Finance, do you have anything in your report?
No.
Sheriff Loki, are you gonna be giving the sheriff's report today?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we're gonna share the responsibilities, thank you. I'd like to start by commending the outgoing city council members, and also Mayor Doyes for providing just exemplary support to the Siskiyou County Sheriff's Office, and I want to welcome the new council members. I apologize, I was unable to attend the first meeting, but, and Madam Mayor, congratulations, we look very much forward to working with you, just a great team, and we appreciate it very much. I just want to give you a quick overview of, give you an idea of what happened in Dunsmere in 2018 from a law enforcement standpoint. The sheriff's office is very busy all of the time, and Dunsmere was pretty active as well, and as you know, we made some pretty major arrests, and I think everybody's familiar with Captain Carl Hauptmann, who's spent a lot of time down here in his previous life, he's kind of the number two on the department, and of course, Ben Westine, sergeant, who is our chief here. So, anyway, just to give you an idea of the crimes in Dunsmere, last year, we responded to 42 alarm calls, 27 animal calls, 16 assault and batteries, one assault with a deadly weapon, let me see here, five auto thefts, 26 burglaries, we had 23 child abuse calls, so as you could see, we've got some work to do in that arena. We had 47 civil-related responses, we had three coroner cases, and the Siskiyou County Sheriff's Office, we're sheriff of coroners. So last year, we had 190 deaths, you know, in the county reported to us, and we worked 96 coroner cases, we had 55 natural deaths, 28 accidental deaths, most of those were motor vehicle accidents, nine suicides, three homicides, and one painting case, just to give you an idea, you know, throughout the county. We also had 147 disturbing the peace calls, 19 domestic violence calls, 13 drunken public calls, a couple drunk drivers, and five embezzlements. We also had two robberies, runaway, eight scams, you know, those are pretty rampant all over the county, you know, these schemes to get money off people. We did 162 school security checks, we're really serious about, you know, visiting the schools continuously and elevating the level of safety to those all schools, and also we have a DARE program that we're negotiating right now to start the drug awareness resistance education training for the kids here in the Dunsmere schools.
Sheriff, do you have mass shooting exercises that you do at the schools?
Yes, we do, in fact, we are arranging some active shooter training probably in the spring, and we had it about a year and a half ago in Siskiyou County, but that is definitely on the radar screen to enhance, you know, the safety of Dunsmere. And obviously, these active shooter situations are occurring all over the United States, they're not abating, and we have to be ready for them even in great towns like Dunsmere. We also, we served three search warrants, conducted 258 security checks. Unfortunately, we had, we investigated five sexual offenses, seven sexual assault felony-related investigations, we had seven, we responded to seven suicide or attempted suicide calls, we had 15 traffic collisions, 58 traffic-related enforcement efforts, 41 trespass calls, 19 vandalisms, we made 158 vehicle stops, we responded to 114 welfare and institution code violations, that's normally, you know, juveniles, you know, hanging out late, doing things that could get them in trouble, and we served 13 search warrants. Total for the year, about 2,064 calls, and that kind of gives you a snapshot of what we've done, you know, during the year. And as you know, we had some pretty major investigations, you know, attempt murders, we've had arson fires that have been, you know, fatal, or where there have been injuries or at least attempted type murders. And we recently, and I want to just elaborate, Madam Mayor, if I may, on recent arrests we made, as you know, there's a little bit of information on social media concerning the Osborne arrest, and that was a case where this individual burgarized the Harley's Antiques. And the good news is that Sergeant Westine and the investigators launched an investigation that resulted in a search warrant being served at the residence where Mr. Osborne resides, and not only did we arrest him for felony charges of, you know, burglary, commercial burglary, and grand theft, and the possession of stolen property, but we also recovered most of the stolen loot, you know, the stolen merchandise, and we also recovered other stolen items. Now, the bad news is, our jail's full, the jail has a little over 100 beds. That weekend, unfortunately, we didn't think there's any way he could be released because he also had two felony arrest warrants out of, well, one in Shasta County, one in Siskiyou County, one in Oregon, all three felony warrants, and Oregon had advised us that they wanted him, so they were gonna come and get him if he was released. Unfortunately, we got some violent offenders in the jail, and he was released earlier than we would like because we had some violent offenders that had to take his bed. I could assure you that I have had a conversation with the jail commander, I've had a conversation with the district attorney, and the investigation is continuing, and investigators have uncovered other crimes. And also, while I'm thinking about it, we also recovered what we think is, you know, like stolen credit cards and mail, and I asked you, we're gonna put out a news release, but please, I would ask all the citizens to get the word out, if you don't receive a credit card that you think you should have received, or you even suspect that your mail is being absconded with or stolen, let us know, because we did receive some stolen property and we're investigating those offenses. Also, the district attorney has given me weekly updates, and he gave me an update today that they're working some additional felony charges, and Sergeant Westine is being updated almost daily, and we had a conversation today, and there's some other things that are planned down the road for perpetrators like that who wreak a havoc in the local area, I could assure you of that.
Are there any questions for Sheriff Loki?
And if I may, Madam Mayor, Sergeant Westine has the monthly report, and I'm gonna hang around, if you have any further questions afterwards, let me know, and I thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, it's the council, gonna report on the December statistics. It was a busy month, and most of our numbers were up. We had a couple major case investigations, but we did have a total of about 588 Dunsmere patrol hours. We had total calls for service included self-initiated activity was 209, which was up from November. Over 1,300 miles were driven in the city of Dunsmere, 23 cases we pulled, 23 traffic stops, we wrote 15 citations. We have seven arrests, three of which were felonies and formal misdemeanors. Some of the details of the arrests, we had a domestic violence arrest, and criminal threats arrest on Dunsmere Avenue. We had a possession of drug per family arrest on Shear, possession of heroin on Lees, possession of methamphetamine on Dunsmere Dash. Also had the arson fire that happened on Dunsmere Avenue, order arrest was made, he's currently in custody. We had a public intoxication arrest on Dunsmere Avenue, and we did have the Harley's Antiques burglary that occurred on Christmas, where Mr. Osborne was booked on the burglary, possession of stolen property, possession of heroin, delinquent or obstructing a peace officer, and the three outstanding felony warrants he had. The sheriff said, we're still working on this investigation, there's been more evidence that's been uncovered, and I've been contacting the district attorney's office. One of the prosecutors, the prosecutor that we have working this case is one of the best prosecutors in the county, so he is very interested in seeing this case through, and he's given us some more follow-up to do so that we can, we can let this guy where he needs to go. So we are still working on it, it was an important case to us that we are continuing to investigate. We had a burglary on Spruce in Dunsmere Avenue as well, we had a couple petty thefts this month on Sacramento and Dunsmere Avenue, we did have, also had assault and batteries on Dunsmere Avenue, two on Dunsmere Avenue, one in Calhoun, and then we had 23 disturbing the peace early calls, which are all over the city of Dunsmere.
Okay, any questions? All right.
To the sheriff's department, I mean, that report was truly sore, as to what's going on in the county.
I mean, that report was truly soulful, as to what's going on in the county. And to me, it reflects that we are poor, and we are rural, and there's a lot of people struggling. And in that context, little things mean a lot. So for your department to take the time to hand out food boxes up in Happy Camp, I think the coverage was inspiring to me. You had volunteers that were willing to go to families with no food and make their holidays a little more bearable, a lot of them with young kids. I think that's notable. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we will move on to, we will stay on this item, but we'll move to any announcements or reports from council members. Councilmember Art, anything?
Well, Madam Mayor, the only thing is my continuing quest to get certain items on the agenda. I suppose I refer to the Protocols Committee, my desire that we begin discussing code enforcement, and that we begin to discuss planning with the notion, one of the features of our budget or finance committee meeting is there are really, in my opinion, there's not a plan with holes in priorities that match our budget against. So I really think we need to start linking together for the months ahead, the rest of this fiscal year and the next fiscal year, what is it that we collectively are trying to do as a council to move the city forward and to see if we can find the resources to do it. Green Living is an example, there's any number of examples, Law Van is an example. So I just hope that we start talking about the, not the general plan, but the plan that has the vitality as we build our economy and try to meet the needs of people.
Council reports. Councilmember Kaisler?
Oh, I got nothing.
You got nothing? Councilmember Brennan?
I mean, except I did reach out to, like, our financial director to begin discussion when the CDVG and DEVG, that's Economic Development Block Grant, and Community Development Block Grant, when that committee can meet, that's the resource that allows us to lend at a very low percentage rate to people wishing to start a business or receive funding for a business or other community related development through the city. We'll get that running in the next few weeks.
Similar to that, just a quick question for you and the finance director at the same time, you might both know this. Are we concerned at all with the current shutdown, that that's going to interrupt any type of funding people have previously gotten from the CDVG, or that we could be getting? Is there any concern there with any type of federal funding we might have previously got, or antisc...
I'll make a mention that I was looking at beginning the process with the USDA, Rural Development, to look at doing an application for water funding for the enterprise, but their website's down because of the government shutdown. So having gotten to the CDVG, we did have a conversation with the state earlier, just before the holidays. I did tell them I was looking at putting together some RFPs to go out for the administration of it, but at this point, we haven't gotten that far yet. So I'm not sure if they're, if the government's shut down or not.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hoych?
Thank you, ma'am. Two things. First of all, I want to echo the support and appreciation for the Sheriff's Department and everything that they're doing, particularly at the moment, I'd like to focus on Sergeant Westine. I know that he's been showing up at a few of our Neighborhood Watch programs and meetings, and it's been a little bit tense, and there've been a lot of times where there isn't anybody here, but working together with the hardliners that have been wanting to make it happen, we're looking forward to having, on the second Thursday of this coming month in February, a meeting, I think we're going to try and have it community building. And the idea will be to introduce our new system. The goal is to have an organized set of neighborhoods that we can actually introduce what a real Neighborhood Watch program is. For a while, it seemed that the people who thought Neighborhood Watch was about finding out who were bad people and seeing how we can make them go away, and really, it's about crime prevention. So we're working together with Sergeant Westine, I appreciate the support he's been giving us, and we look forward to having everybody keep your eyes out, we're getting information out about this meeting, and it'll be a chance for everybody to start participating in making your neighborhood safer. The second thing I wanted to bring up was that I noticed that both with the first snow we had and with the burst of the pipes, that there was a lot of trepidation in the community, you know, how was, why is it my streets clear to the snow yet, and what's going on with the water system? I want to make it clear for anybody that hasn't had the opportunity to get to know the staff that we have here and the workers that we have here, if you're new or you just haven't gotten out and about, we have a really remarkable set of people that work in this community. And I think that I could look and I could say to anybody that's working in the staff that they honestly believe that they want, they're here to make the city better. And when the snow comes, they get out there, and they do it as fast as they can, as good as they can. When the pipes burst, they worked as fast as they could and had the water running later on that night. So I just want to let you know that when you think about what the city comes up with, there may be times where something falls through the cracks, but the people that work for us really care, and we're fortunate for that. Thank you.
And I believe there are quite a few people off that day when the water main broke, so that was another, we have very limited staff sometimes, so there's that issue.
Yeah, well, they did this, but they did a good job.
They did.
They did a good job.
All right. Anything else from the other council members before I set mine? Okay, perfect. So I just want to address a couple of the public comments that came up, starting with, we did address the location of the committees, they're going to be here from now on if they are canceled or moved anywhere, there will be a notice on the door, and that does include city council meetings. I know a couple of people were frustrated, we did cancel the first meeting in January, so we will make sure that that cancellation notice is better posted for those who may have come to this building expecting a meeting. As far as committee seating, Councilmember Kaisler and I had a conversation, and frankly, I don't really care where I sit. If you have your personal opinion about where I sit, that's okay. What we'll be doing with the protocols, though, is we'll be bringing those as a public item, so you will be able to comment on that. And if people would like the mayor to sit in the middle, and if you want us to sit in alphabetical order, you can bring those, that would be appropriate time to bring those comments forward. Frankly, I can get work done in any seat that someone puts me in. So moving down the broken fire horn, I'm going to refer that to our city manager, Brandon again, to maybe hopefully either address, you don't have to necessarily address it tonight, but maybe come back with a little bit more information for us. We'll schedule that on a future agenda item.
It's already been brought a couple times.
Okay.
So the fire chief has been looking into it, and I've asked him to look at bringing it back for the budget this past year.
Okay, thank you very much. So there you go. It'll be talked about with the budget. Finally, large agenda packets, small space, sending agenda items. So similar to what Councilmember Art had brought up before, asking about items on the agenda, I do try to have concise agendas as much as possible. I don't want to be here for all night either. Most of us are working professionals, like the rest of you that may be here, and so we do try to keep them as concise as possible. Unfortunately, when we do have things come up that need to be addressed, so the public hearings from planning, public hearings about our waste and treatment project, they have to be brought up as soon as possible to keep those items going. So we will try to be concise in the future, but sometimes things come up and have to be addressed when they come up. So that was that one. And then finally, I had a really nice meeting with Monty Mendon Hall from Pacific Power, I think that Councilmember Art alluded to it earlier. It was kind of a side meeting, not necessarily for the disaster planning side of it, but just discussing the electrical lines, what Pacific Power is going to be doing in the next couple of years to address fire hazards, as well as how they can work with us as a city to help that out as well. That is a concern about those lines, so we'll be continuing to work with them as a partner going forward. And that's it for my report. So I will take us to the consent agenda, item number ten on the second page of your packets. And so consent agenda item, item A, check registered December 21st, 2018 through January 11th, 2019, and the Land Vess Field Break Letter of Support. Consent agenda items consist of proposed actions on business matters which are considered routine, for which approval is based on previously approved city policy practice, in this case, a presentation today. The consent agenda can be, will be approved in a single motion to adopt the consent agenda, and council members will vote on it without debate. If a council member would like to have more discussion and debate the item, they may remove that from the consent agenda. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and B tonight?
I made a motion to adopt consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a first and a second. To adopt consent agenda item A, check registered for December 21st, 2018 through January 11th, 2019, and 10B, Land Vess Field Break Letter of Support. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, objections, item passed. The motion was made by Councilmember Kaisler and sent in by Councilmember Hoych. Thank you. We will now move into our public hearings. We'll start first with the zoning ordinance recommendation from Planning Commission regarding cannabis. So I will hand that over to our city staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The city council is being asked to amend the Dunsmere Municipal Code at Chapter seventeen dot ten, as shown in Exhibit One, allowing certain cannabis license types and uses in certain zones, together with proposed negative declaration. So this journey where we're at today began well over a year ago with the formation of the, what was then the Marijuana Task Force, and then ultimately became the Cannabis Task Force. And just last month, the Planning Commission had their second hearing, public hearing on the agenda for this item, and at the end of the last hearing, they proposed to move that, to bring it to the city council for consideration and possible adoption. This is the first reading. So I also want to make notes that we have a planner here who is closely connected with making sure that it got through the Planning Commission, and also our city attorney to make sure that everything was to legal form. So I wanted to let you know that they're here as well for questions and comments. I'll give it over to you.
Thank you. So how we, typically go through the public hearing is staff report questions from council members, and then we will open the public hearing for the public to give their testimony, and then we will close that public hearing, and then that's when it's the appropriate time for council members to have discussion, voice opinions, and stances on things. So we will start with questions from the council for city staff. Councilmember Art?
Madam Mayor, I apologize for being nitpicky, but there's a couple of typos. Page twenty-five, in the paragraph that heads the resolution, all caps, licenses misspelled. And on the next page, Agenda twenty-six, one, two, three, the fourth, whereas, was it read correctly?
I believe it should, if I'm correct in interpreting this, it should read, whereas the amendment was found to be compatible with the adjacent neighborhood usage, correct?
That's what I thought.
It's missing the word be at this point.
And then with regard to, as I understand, the Planning Commission has already acted on this.
Correct.
And so if you go to page thirty-seven, that looks to be the Planning Commission's resolution, and yet there's no votes in place. It looks like...
Yeah, we do, I believe Arlene has a copy of that, we could put out a projector. It was something that we had to coordinate with the chair of the Planning Commission to get his signature, we have that now.
Well, I think for the community and for me as a council member, I would like to know any votes or significant comments that occurred with the Planning Commission. Was it unanimous, was it vitally flawed?
I wasn't at the Planning Commission, Arlene, could you speak to that?
Certainly, yeah. The, there were, one person was at, and then of course, we had one person come off of the Planning Commission that night. So we had five voting members, and two of them would have preferred the original table. Two of the members would have preferred the original table that the task force put forward, that would have enabled outdoor grows at the A-O-one level. That's the smallest outdoor grow for commercial purposes. They would have preferred that to be allowed in the R-one, R-two, and R-three zones with a conditional use permit. The other three supported the change that was proposed by one of the Planning Commissioners, the two not permit any outdoor grows in the R-one, R-two, or R-three zone.
That's commercial? No, R-one is residential. No, what I'm saying, though, is no commercial grows, could you have, can you have outdoor six-plant grows?
Personal.
Personal.
This ordinance does not affect the personal.
Okay.
I believe the language doesn't sit right now in the previously approved ordinance, I think it is like five eighty or something like that, I can't remember the number, but I believe it says that personal grows are allowed in all residential zones, and it does not require a permit from the city. At least, that's what it is right now.
Okay. So for the five voting members, the vote was what, on what we're looking at tonight?
Three to two.
Three to two.
Yep.
And the issue that the two were interested in had to do with residential neighborhoods?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for city staff from council members? All right, seeing none, I am going to open the public hearing at approximately seven thirty-two PM. So we will invite anyone up who would like to give public testimony on this proposed zoning ordinance change. You will have three minutes to give your statement, and we will have that recorded.
I attended all the Cannabis Task Force meetings, and the one change that the Planning Commission made is the one that we spent, I think, the most time on, and I'm disappointed that they changed it. And what we fought for was that, and Dunsmere, some of you may have not lived here that long, but some people have rather large parcels, and some people have small ones. But some people have really large parcels, and the argument was made that if they want to grow outdoors, cultivate commercial cannabis out on their property, they could come to the Planning Commission and ask for permission to get a conditional use permit. And then they would have to, they would have to submit drawings, and they would be inspected, and by a case-by-case place, a few people might be able to make a living by growing outdoors commercial cannabis. So we allowed that, the Cannabis Task Force approved that, and we spent a lot of time on it. So that really bothers me, that if people could spend hours and hours and hours and finally allow it, only to have the Planning Commission overturn it by a vote of three to two. And I understand that Carol Scowco is really adamantly against the people growing outdoors, but what this didn't allow is that everybody could grow outdoors, it was just a case-by-case scenario. So I'd like you to consider that, if you want people to get involved and attend these task force meetings for whatever it is, this time it was cannabis, but if they spend all that time and they come to an agreement only to have it overturned, it makes people not want to get involved. So I ask you to make a motion and somebody change that back to what the Cannabis Task Force originally approved, because we did spend a lot of time on that, one issue. And I think it would mean a lot, especially young people, if they can find a way to make a living in today's economy by growing a few plants outside. Thanks.
I love you. So you can come up and give a public comment, you get the three minutes. Everyone else, okay.
Hi, I'm Carol Scowco, I'm a member of the Planning Commission. What I wanted to say is, and what I talked about in the Planning Commission, is that when I bought my house in a residential area, I knew it was residential. I knew it wasn't mixed use. And other people in the city who bought homes were in residential areas, that's what they bought. So I'm not saying, I mean, everybody can grow plants by law for their own personal use, but to have... But to have R1, R2, and R3...
Just because of the recording and microphone.
To have R1, R2, and R3 open to approximately 5,000 square feet, it's not a cottage industry. It's not like somebody is making, I don't know, they're knitting and they're making hats and scarves. With the introduction of marijuana, whether it's an outside grow, or they can go inside the house, with that going on, it brings other elements into the neighborhood. My biggest thing is that I want the neighborhoods to remain neighborhoods. I'm not against free enterprise, anybody else wanting to do, make a living. That's not what I'm into. I'm also a policeman's daughter, so I know what comes along with a lot of things. So that's why I spoke so strongly about it. I don't wish anybody to be poor or to not have an opportunity in this county. I just think there are other ways to do it, other places to do it. And to take the time and effort of our city and our staff, and not the Planning Commission, but we are the servants, for the conditional use permits, I think also is a negative. So my idea, and it's like Pollyanna, is I want more young people to buy homes. I want them to have kids and to have, go to school, and to make our community more family-oriented. And it's happening in small ways for us. So that is why I come before you and say, don't change this. You know, a vote is a vote. Three to two is a win for whoever has the three. So I know that people have been working, and I appreciate you, Leslie, that you've been working on the task force, and you've been, you know, been involved in the community. And so, but I just want to say that that was my biggest, biggest objection. And I also noticed at the Planning Commission...
Thank you, Dr. Ferminus.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for the public hearing tonight?
He's moving slow, he's working his way up here.
No problem.
I'm the two votes of Planning Commissioner. What they wanted to change was manufacture, which I said we don't allow volatile manufacturing in the city limits, 800 feet out of the city limits, maybe if somebody wanted to build something out of the airport. That was the manufacturing part of it. If people wanted to make, some people have like crop pots where they can make oil, where they wanted to make cookies, CBD creams, whatever, that is manufacturing. Are we going to not allow that anymore? I mean, that's the manufacturing part they want to change. Somebody's got 5,000 square foot and wants to do whatever they want on it, that's their own business. But that's why I voted to change it back. One person had stepped down at the meeting. Another one didn't show up at the meeting because he's, his business is associated with it. So he didn't want to come in and vote one way or the other. But, I mean, we're talking about water extraction. If you want a crop pot and make some oil and make some cookies or candy, are we going to be able to do that? I use CBD cream on my cancer, and I also do an edible for my cancer, which I make myself in a crop pot.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Joseph Serna, Higher Grounds Cannabis Collective here in town. Mr. Arden.
You have to speak up.
Okay, Joseph Serna, Higher Grounds Cannabis. I was just wondering where we were at on our agenda as far as my business and what we're doing with our situation, with our licensing.
So just to let everybody know, it's not a back and forth during a public comment. You just give your public comment. So you can ask that question, but we can't respond.
Okay, my public comment is, is just this gentleman came up and just spoke. You know, the cannabis industry does a lot of service to the communities. We service a lot of sick people. I myself would like to be put on agenda to give a testimonial of Higher Grounds Cannabis, things we do, searching for the sheer foundation, all the good things that we do. And what this gentleman is talking about is bringing non-volatile, you know, recipes to the table that are all medically sane for people, whether it's a big pharmaceutical company or not. I'm a part of Ring Holdings Corporation, California. You know, technically, we hold every license in California, our whole entity, you know, entitled to the company. I can bring you research for that and all the good things that we do. What I'm asking here is for the whole council to take statement that there's a lot of people that depend on that. I believe that zoning, everything should be the way it should be, you know, but, you know, the right manner. And I hope that the council can recognize that, that there's a lot of people that depend on us, a lot of people that we need. I mean, I'm working outside of town as well as in town to support the needs of all of our patients in our community. And, you know, I just ask you guys to take into consideration that as of right now, I've shut my shop down to be in compliance with all state laws. You know, I'm doing everything I can. But every day that we are shut down, your community suffers, our business suffers, the people around us, his cancer suffers. You're being forced to make that in his own reconnaissance, right? That there's more harm doing that than having a legitimate facility, non-volatile for these people. I mean, it's a good thing. I mean, every other city guy's, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And if you know that you have a public comment, you can feel free to come up and be behind us the next person so that we, our time is...
I'm Michael Bush, Butterfly Avenue. To make it a little easier on everybody, I just ask the City Council to please turn to page 26 and 27 of the packet. And page 26 and 27 of the packet. And of course, everybody knows how confusing marijuana is to everybody, including myself. What we're doing, this ordinance, is a commercial ordinance. That's what it's about. It's a commercial ordinance. And I'd like to, on the bottom of 26, where the, what is called the, I forget the name, but the grid, I think you call it. My point on this, so I'd like people to look on page 26, R1, R2, R3. And I'm asking, as you look down the column, it says not permitted, not permitted, not permitted. Basically, what it says is this ordinance is that commercial growing in, commercial cannabis growing is not allowed in R1, R2, and R3. And so just basically, I'm saying, I support that. I think that there should not be commercial cannabis growing in the residential areas. That's just like one sentence of saying what this whole thing means. I'm saying I believe that residential areas should be for residents and raised families. So I think that commercial cannabis cultivation should not be allowed in the residential areas, R1, R2, R3. R4, I'm not familiar with that particular area, so I don't have a comment on that. And the rest of it is too complicated to compliment to. I just took one area of this, because I only have three minutes. I'm focusing on the residential areas. And I'm hoping that you will ask yourself, do most people in Dunsmere want commercial growing in residential areas? Up to 5,000 square feet? I don't think so. You represent the people. That's my opinion after living here for 70 years. I believe most people in Dunsmere do not want commercial growing in residential areas. And so I'm asking basically that the, this ordinance, 560, on page 26 and 27, that it stand as according to what it says in the residential areas. The rest of it, I'm not commenting on. I think that at least you understand what I'm saying. I hope.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? So we typically only allow people to give one public comment? I'm sorry, you just can't have more time than other people?
Well, 62% of the people in Dunsmere...
Sir? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at approximately 7:40 PM, and we will now move into council discussion. Councilmember Arden, would you like to start?
I have very little to say other than to express my gratitude to the Citizens Committee, to former Mayor Bryce Gregg, to the Planning Commission members. The reason I got recalled the first time was because of this issue. And the state of California and the communities in sub-Annecyto have moved a long ways over the ensuing years. And to have the level of unanimity that has been achieved through the Citizen Committee and the Planning Commission, my comment to those debating what is right in the residential zoning is we have a long ways to go. I think Michael Bush was entirely correct that the push was to do commercial growing, manufacturing, et cetera, first. But Madam Mayor, I have studied the Mount Shasta residential system fairly closely, the tag system, and I don't know how it's going to work as we get into the growing season, but I think it's smart. We're going to have to have some way to not have neighbors shooting at each other as prohibited, all in the share of calling the code enforcement office. There's going to need to be a dialogue so that we all get along together. But I think that lies ahead, so whoever you want to entertain a motion to adopt what we had before us, I'm happy.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, I have a point of order, I guess. With the idea of public hearings, we have three, is that right?
For zoning amendments?
For this, yeah, this cannabis ordinance.
So you only have to have one public hearing for the first reading?
Okay.
So this would be the only public hearing, unless you would like to schedule another public hearing?
No, I'm not. I'm just trying to say, so the output of this particular motion, where we are right now, is to come up with a motion to adopt?
No, this would be a motion to approve the first reading to allow the ordinance to go to the second reading.
Okay, good.
So you can only adopt, and that goes for all ordinances, you can only adopt an ordinance after a minimum of two readings.
That's the number one to get to, so...
Yep. So if someone at some point does recommend to amend this, that is considered substantial, then we would have to have another public hearing and a first reading. But if we keep it as is, it can go to a second reading. So technically, the motion tonight would be the motion to, I believe it's adopt the first reading of the ordinance and move it to the second...
To introduce it for the first reading.
Introduce it, thank you. So is there any other discussion or motion?
I move to introduce the item for first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And so that would be by title only and waive the reading?
Yeah.
What he said.
By title only. So then you would just have to read the title on page 26.
Okay.
Yeah, just the title.
1901. 2019 dash 01. Discussion?
Sure.
I'd like to take this moment to again echo what Councilmember Arden pointed out, that where we are right now, as five members of the council, is sitting at the very end of a long, long, long effort by a lot of people. And I could go one way or the other on the residential, but I'm going to personally go along with the idea that the process is set three to two, and that's, I think this is where we should go with this.
Thank you.
I have to agree with both what Bruce says and what he said. We're just trying to get started. We can talk about the rest later, but this is the way to get started. And again, everybody that was involved, thank you for your efforts in getting us here. We all put a lot of time, I'm sure there was some, I'm glad I wasn't in the meeting, but I'm thankful that we got here. Well, they were close to it. Oh, I can imagine.
I'll say that word, because I can mean something totally different for cannabis. This is your joke seat. Anyway, just a little bit longer. So Councilmember Arden, would you like to, so it would be motion to introduce ordinance 560, and then you would read the title, and then at the end say by title only? Do you forget that, and you have to read the whole thing? Please don't.
We are at page 25 or 26?
26 is, I believe, the ordinance.
A motion to adopt introduction of ordinance 560 and ordinance of the City of Dunsmere City Council approving a zone text adding Municipal Code Section 17 dot 10 dot 010, 17 dot 10 dot 0020, and 17 10 dot 030 to further define cannabis operations and allow certain aspects and licensure, misspelled, of the cannabis industry as permitted uses or uses permitted with a conditional use permit in some of the zoning districts in the City of Dunsmere.
I second it.
All right. And actually, a really quick point of order. Arlene, did Planning Commission adopt the sequo documentation at the Planning Commission meeting, or are you requesting that tonight as well?
I'm requesting that the City Council do that. They recommended that a negative deck be adopted, but they did not get the adoption.
And then just point of, just for the order's sake, City Attorney Kenny, do we have to adopt the neg deck before we go to the...
It doesn't matter. It'd be better to do it first, but yes.
Okay.
Or by the same motion.
Okay, would you like to add page 25 to your motion then?
With the consent of the Chair, the motion would extend to adopting Resolution Number 2019 dash 01, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dunsmere approving of a negative declaration for the project described as a zone text amendment to further define cannabis operations and allow certain aspects and licenses of the cannabis industry as permitted uses or uses permitted with a conditional use permit in some of the zoning districts in the City of Dunsmere per Exhibit 1.
I'll take it.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, you're okay with that amendment? So there's been a first by Councilmember Arden, second by Councilmember Keisler. Any other dissent from the council members? All right, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, all in favor. Thank you.
One more, Jeff.
So we'll move to our next, and again, thank you so much for the people who served on that task force, as well as the Planning Commission for going through that process. All right, and we'll move to the next public hearing, which is a public hearing for the code amendment regarding breweries. I will open this up for the staff report.
Point of order?
Yes.
I am going to recuse myself on this item. And the reason is, I own a parcel of property, a little corner, five and ten store, and the Dunsmere Brewery Works is proposing to expand and move their brewing operation into the rear of a cornered building. So I do have a financial interest in the outcome of this matter. So I will see you later. Let me know when you're done.
Thank you. Julie, are you going to give me a call or a text? Peter, can we look at the contact? Thank you very much, Councilmember Arden, for that. So we will now move into the staff report. Seeing as you're writing in, or are you...
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, your upward consideration is Amendment of Section 17.04.050 and 17.12.070, the Dunsmere Municipal Code, defining and allowing certain brewery type and uses in the central commercial, which is C2, zone with a conditional use permit, together with proposed negative declaration. And I'm just going to hand the mark to one over to Arlene at this point and see if there's anything else.
Just a point of clarification, this also means the C2 zone that is inside the historic district boundaries.
Okay, thank you. And then... And then, similar to what Councilmember Art had communicated for our first item, could we have the vote by Planning Commission and a general synopsis of the discussion?
The vote was unanimous in favor. All five members at that meeting voted approval of this. And there was a short presentation by the applicant. There were really no questions at the commission level. Everybody seemed to be on board.
Be on board, yeah. Are there any other councilmember questions of staff regarding this item?
Questions, no.
Okay. And then are you requesting, yep, I see you requesting again that we certify the neg-dec.
Yes.
So, yeah. Are you guys good to open the public hearing? All right, so I'll open the public hearing for the code amendment for the brewery in C-two zoning at approximately seven fifty PM. So I will open it up for anyone who'd like to come up and give a public comment. Just a reminder, here you go, three minutes.
That's all we need. Really great public comment. On the applicant, I'm Aaron Greener, with Dunsmere Brewery Works. I didn't see this coming. I thought the businesses were already listed as approved in C-two for this, but working with Arlene, still, it's, I think, a good thing that we're going through this process before other breweries start coming in also, and getting kind of the groundwork laid down. What's the city gonna see as far as wastewater chemicals we're using, impacts on the wastewater treatment plant? So it's a good thing, I think, that we're going to be required to have a wastewater discharge permit, and then moving forward with every other brewery that does try to come in and open up in C-two. And that's it. It's pretty straightforward, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am, to the public, would you describe what this change will do that you're planning in the new building?
We're mainly moving all of our brewery operations. The restaurant stays where it is, the tasting room, the restaurant, it's all just commercial, just manufacturing. No public tasting rooms in the public areas.
I got one question, Madam Mayor. He's applicant. Is it all right?
Yep, quick.
You're responsible for pretty much where we're at up there right now, and all you're trying to do is make it better, because that's like?
Trying to double our capacity, trying to distribute to Redding, Chico, and points north.
Right on. Thanks, everyone.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close the hearing at approximately seven fifty-two PM. I will now open it up for councilmember discussion. I actually do have a quick question. So as I went through reviewing this for breweries, what's the status for other types of spirits as far as wine barreling, wine making, and distilleries?
That's still an unanswered question. The applicant specifically applied for brewing, and not limited to beer, anything that needs to be brewed.
Like a witcher.
But, but yes, distilleries and other spirits are still?
To be clear, fermentation, is that under brewing, or is that a separate function?
It is under brewing, under the definition on page forty-three.
There is a fermentation process in brewing.
No, I understand that, though. This is like wine fermentation, is that considered separate? Or would that be under this?
It would not be under this by what I read.
Correct.
It's a hops thing?
No, it's a yeast.
A yeast?
I'm from Wisconsin, we talked about beer off here. Okay, that would be, from my perspective, that's definitely something we should start looking into, just so that it's covered. Just because, you know, distilleries are becoming much more popular.
Absolutely.
And wine making too, just as much as brewing, and I don't see keeping it separate.
I completely agree, but since it was driven by the applicant, we went with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the councilmembers regarding this motion? And it would be the same type of motion? This would be the same type of motion where it would be a motion to introduce the ordinance by title only, and then to also adopt the Resolution twenty nineteen dash two on page forty-two.
Do I give it a shot?
Do I give a shot?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance five sixty-one by number only.
Introduce.
Introduce by number only, and to adopt the Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash oh-two, negative declaration.
So you will have to read the title of vote, but just say title only at the end.
I gotta be?
Yeah. I'm sorry. You can only read all of it.
In order to the City Council of the City of Dunsmere approving of the amendments to section seventeen point oh-four point oh-five-oh and seventeen point one-two point oh-seven-oh of the Dunsmere Municipal Code to define breweries and allow nano breweries, micro breweries, and brew pubs in the C-two central commercial zone with a conditional use permit, and also adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash oh-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dunsmere recommending adoption of a negative declaration for the project described as a zone text amended to define breweries and allow commercial breweries of certain size in the C-two central commercial zone.
By title only.
By title only.
All right.
You deserve an Oscar for that.
There you go. Maybe in the future, maybe you can have shorter titles. Just saying.
In the past, we have.
Yeah. So is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it. He has it. The gentleman has it.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any other dissent? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, all in favor, with Councilmember Art absent.
Somebody want to tell me to come back in?
All right.
You're doing what you're doing, man. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, guys. All right, so we will move to our third public hearing that we had moved up at the beginning of this meeting, so thirteen B and new business is actually now our third public hearing. Yeah. You wanna take a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna move for a five-minute recess. We'll come back at basically eight o'clock. Took a little bit longer, because we have one bathroom, and a lot of people have used it. So we will now go back into our public hearing business. We will now introduce the wastewater treatment improvement project, and I will hand that over to Pace Engineering and city staff for comment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just gonna turn it over to the consultant, to, oh yeah, Carla Thompson, to give a report on the CEQA mitigated negative declaration. So if you could please, please.
Hello, I'm Carla Thompson. I'm with N Plan in Redding, and I've been working with Pace Engineering to complete the initial study and environmental mitigated negative declaration for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. I believe you all have read the initial study, so I won't get into major details about the project unless you have any questions. The initial study covered all aspects of the project, including alternatives that were considered, and that included upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, and also the possibility of installing a new outfall south of the existing outfall, and to convert the plant from chlorine disinfection to UV disinfection. So we submitted the initial study and MND through the State Clearing House for public agency review. We also published the notice in the newspaper for public, for local public comment period, and we received two comment letters during the public comment period, one from Regional Water Quality Control Board with their standard requirements for permits, and then one from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, which were project-specific, and those resulted in amendments to three of the mitigation measures. The first measure was for the protection of Pacific-tailed frog and foothill yellow-legged frog. And we did have to amend that, because the foothill yellow-legged frog is now a candidate species under the state for threatened status, and it is afforded the same protections as an actual listed threatened species. So the mitigation measure is if we find the frogs in the work area, they need to be relocated, but for a candidate species, that requires an incidental take permit. So the mitigation measure reflects that. If we do the pre-construction survey, find the frog, we get the incidental take permit. When we get closer to construction, we'll discuss that a little bit more. We could assume presence of the frog and get the incidental take permit, but the permit fee is over fifteen thousand dollars. So we'll do some more consultation with CDFW before the city commits to doing that. The other two mitigation measures were for prevention of spread of noxious weeds, and also more stringent requirements for the nesting bird survey. There is a resolution in your packet adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The mitigation monitoring and reporting program includes all of the mitigation measures as amended based on comments by CDFW. And once the MND is adopted by council, we would file a notice of determination with the State Clearing House and the county clerks, and that would be the end of the CEQA process. We also have NIVA-like requirements due to the clean water SRF funding, and those documents are submitted through the State Water Resources Control Board.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Yeah. Councilmember Kaiser?
Okay. If we approve this, why can't we get fifteen thousand dollars for fraud I know don't exist?
Absolutely not.
Good question. Eighteen fifty grand, a lot of money. Very lucky I might not be there.
Thompson or Art?
Well, a question to the financial staff. On Agenda Page fifty-eight, the staff report fiscal impact. It says the effective fund for this budgeted expense is the general fund. Why isn't it the sewer fund?
That box was not unchecked, so that is a typo. There should be no fiscal impact.
Right. The city, the grant funding that the city received covered all of the environmental review, so there would be no fee to the city.
In the event that we do have to file a permit, I would assume it comes out of an enterprise fund, or would that be general fund?
I'm not sure if this part of the grant program, or if this is something that... We have grant funds. I'm not sure if there's money in there, or it would come out of the enterprise fund.
Okay, thank you. Is that a public?
Yes, as my only comment, I'm perfectly happy with the item, is...
Just questions for right now? Okay. Then we'll get to council. Okay, perfect. I have no questions, so thank you, Carla. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing at approximately eight thirteen PM. Is there any public comment on the CEQA documentation for wastewater treatment improvements? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at approximately eighteen PM. And we will now move into discussion, I believe. I'm gonna give it to Councilmember Art first, because he did say he had some discussion.
And it's only that, first of all, congratulations to everybody as we try to do our part to keep the Sacramento River pristine. But all of the mitigation measures, everything around the sewer plant, and I'm speaking as someone that spent months on the task force, we need a wastewater three operator now and not later. So I'm still looking to get on our agenda, or however it gets through, the directive to move that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Kaiser?
On that note, aren't you a wastewater three?
No.
Yes.
So the other thing, too, is we're just discussing this element here, and the wastewater three will be a discussion.
Okay. I'm off into the sewer discussion later on. I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution adopting a mitigated declaration.
Negative declaration.
Negligation and a mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the Dunsmere wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
By title only.
By title only.
All right, there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's made second. Any dissent? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries, all in favor. It's a motion by Councilmember Kaiser, seconded by Councilmember Art. All right. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, Carla. Thank you, Paul. All right, so we do not have any more public hearings tonight, so we will move into old business. Seeing no old business, we will move into new business, and we will start off with thirteen A Sewer and Solid Waste Prop two eighteen, discussion and possible action. City Manager Brad again, or Pace?
I'll just open it up, and then invite Paul to come up as well. So a little bit of the background, the rate study committee was developed by the City Council to have a focus group comprised of two city council members, three citizen members, city treasurer, city engineer, and staff. The goal of this committee was to involve community stakeholders in fiscal challenges with the wastewater and solid waste enterprises, and to provide solutions for council to consider. Staff placed ads in the local paper and on the city's website, Facebook and Twitter accounts, asking citizens to join the committee. At the March fifteenth city council meeting, the city council selected citizen members for the committee. And since that time, we have had six public meetings and two public workshops, today being the second of the public workshops. At the last city council meeting, we had our engineer, Paul Ruder, here to talk about the solid, the sewer, the wastewater treatment rate study, and he is here today. He gave a presentation earlier on the solid waste rate study, and he is here as well to answer any questions. And Paul, do you have anything to add? One of the other things that we're looking to do is we're looking for a council to provide some direction, if they would like to give staff direction to move forward with the Prop two eighteen, or one of the things that the committee had talked about was doing a town hall meeting. That we had questions as to if we're gonna do a town hall meeting. Do we do a Prop two eighteen first, then do a two eight, then do a town hall? Or do we want to do a town hall meeting and then a Prop two eighteen? And from the people that were present at the last, the water rate structure, rate increase that was done, they said they did the town hall meeting first, and they had a lot of people come out for that. So that seems to be the recommendation from the committee.
So as far as thinking members on that, councilmembers, do you want to talk about that now, or would you just like to move to questions?
I'd like to move to questions.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of Paul Ruder or staff? All right, so, okay. So I will open it up for public comment now. If you would like to come up and give a public comment on this item, this is the time to do so. You have, again, three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion. Is there any discussion on the matter regarding whether we do the two eighteen process, then town hall, then the town hall, or town hall first? Or others?
What we did for the water process was to have a good town hall where we had an opportunity to explain carefully how we worked up our numbers. And that's kind of the way we've been working right now, is to be able to have each of us look at the numbers and look at the way we put together the rates, and understand how and why we did it. And I think that having that first gives everybody a chance to go away understanding why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay. Question actually to Jen Kenny, concerning solid waste. Would you recommend that we have a closed session scheduled with you at the next meeting regarding any previous litigation?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
No, okay.
Just a comment on the timing of the meetings. You could go either way, but I would recommend the town hall meeting first, because you want, it's more than just convincing the public you know what you're doing, but you may want to listen to what the public, some things may want to come, that came up, would come up at the hearing, that would cause you to want to amend or change what would be considered, put in a notice for the Prop two eighteen hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to?
Well, I concur with town hall first, but with both my citizen hat on and council member hat on, I think by and large, this will be news to the public, that they're facing five years of sewer rate increases. Is there room in the U-T? Is there room in the utility billing envelope that goes out every month from the city of Dunsmere for Pace and the city manager to collaborate to publicize the town hall meeting and just give the overall reasons why our group is deciding to do what we're deciding to do?
Uh, yes, we'll make sure that if we need to do a budget amendment, we're in the process of bringing some anyways, well, if we could do that. Probably the biggest challenge is making sure that we get the billing system, which is in another state, then the notice to be put into the bill in time. So I, I, you know, I'll...
Please put it between, send it between the twelve, thirteen to the night before the following month.
Okay.
Thank you.
And is it out to me now for that?
It's better to keep them informed.
My, my opinion on this too is kind of similar to Councilmember, with Councilmember Art's. I think before we do the town hall meeting, it would be very advantageous for staff to make sure that the mailer has the most detail possible that people would find interesting, but also I think it would be very helpful to budget part of that outreach and town hall meeting to also have a page on the website that people can go to for the case study reports that are going through so that people can pull through those a little bit more in depth ahead of time, um, if, if that's possible.
Do I say? Um, I'm not sure if we have the ability to add a page. We'll look into it though.
Okay.
I wanted to talk about that on the side anyway, so we're gonna...
I, I think it would be...
You can do it, you can do anything.
Um, I, I think it would be really good to have that just for people who may want to go and get those documents and then make sure that we have something in the mailer or have information at city hall about if people want to come in and pay to have one printed. Um, I think a lot of people will want to have that information ahead of time. And it would be, I think, advantageous for us to do that so that when people are coming into this meeting, they're as personally educated as possible and that meeting isn't a cluster.
Similarly, if we could have resources handy for people who want to look more deeply into the matter. City hall, I know you have them there, but just pull them out and have them ready for people.
Well, one of the things we can do is we can take the digital copies of the rate studies, we'll go look here and put them up there so they can read them all right there.
I think that'd be great. And then maybe a, a hard copy for the library too or some other locations that people may be more...
Perhaps reach out to the local paper for some coverage.
Yeah, that was one of the things that, I think the paper did a, a, a hard page. It wasn't an ad, but they did a news article on, we got hard page, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, very helpful, yes.
Yeah, and maybe even referencing the, the workshops that we'll record. Did we record the workshops?
No, we didn't.
We did not?
We did, we did an ad, yeah.
Okay. Um, maybe in the future we might want to do that and then we can put audio on for people to listen to those. That would probably be helpful as well. I think any way that we can get the most amount of information out before the 218 process, the better. Proactive planning is way better than reactive planning, so.
Um, I have a question. If, if we wanted to, I know we could get a recording done of these two different presentations that Paul did and just record it and do a nice quality job and put it up on the web as well.
Yeah, we could probably record the town hall, maybe if you're going to...
That will, the town hall certainly we do that, you're right.
Uh, one other half-baked thought is we celebrate the Red Sox and Travelers Hotel. They are going to be a very large customer of the city's water and sewer services. And I'm worried that the lodging industry is somewhat fragmented. And the major, one of the major changes as we do the sewer rates is now your sewer rates will swing off of how much water you use. And so as we go through the issue of water conservation, rates for the big user like that, the other big thing we try to do is shrink fifty sewer categories down to a far fewer workable number. But I wouldn't want our welcome to the Travelers Hotel people to say, "Look, we're going to pitch out business for these water and sewer rates." So I do think we need to start working with the major users so they understand. We have Louis Dewey on our committee, he's a big user, he was a big help. But still we have some new big users coming to town.
We might want to have a special get-together for those large users by invitation. Maybe sit down, and that's up to the council obviously, but that's an idea to follow.
So who was assigned to the rate study at law?
It's right now, it's Peter, myself, Dave, who's there for a while. And when he, when Peter became a council member, Dave stepped out.
Would you two like to serve as that larger?
Louis Dewey, Delaunta.
Delaunta.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, you...
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to invade the province of the Economic Development Committee, but yes, I think we ought to maybe meet with Richard Dinges to see if this will be chamber led, city led, or a little bit different.
So it sounds like the direction that council's giving to staff is that there should be a smaller meeting with large users that were identified just to discuss the...
Well, we could probably word it as non-residential.
Non-residential.
Because they treat it very differently in the district.
Okay, so it's not even a non-residential?
That's a good point, yeah.
That we would like to do the town hall prior to the 218 process? And that there be investment in paper and electronic copies of the studies and resources so that people can understand what the proposal is?
And then timeframe wise, it would be possible to perhaps have staff prepare a draft of the letter that we put in the bill by next council meeting, so we can get out for March.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, does anyone want to make a motion to do that?
Make a motion to do that.
Okay.
I think people are getting tired.
Julie, do you have that?
I have, it's currently meeting with large users, non-residential. We'll have a town hall meeting prior to Prop 218. We're going to do both paper and electronic copies of the research so folks can understand it. Anyone draft of the letter by the next council meeting this week? It's going to be going to the...
Wow. And then the second. All right, so there's first and the second, any dissent? No dissent, we'll move into a vote. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Councilmember Ruch made his motion, Councilmember Kreisler was the second. Thank you, and thank you Paul. Moving on to new business, our final piece of new business is the disaster planning advisory committee resolution and goals.
Sure.
Need to be in the public hearing, because it was a public hearing, and stuff is...
Yeah, I know I need to go back, but you don't make it. You said, you said something when we got there and we went right over it. I need to say something.
About the wastewater operator?
Yeah.
How about we go through this item and I'll give you that answer or do you want to...
Just sign right here and I'm getting that checked, okay.
Madam Mayor, I think, yeah, looking at the agenda, item A was supposed to be both sewer and solid waste. We haven't talked about solid waste.
Okay, um, let's talk about solid waste. We can go back in, so there's been a request to go back into item thirteen A. Is there an objection to that by council?
Is that right?
All right, so we go back into thirteen A to talk about solid waste.
Um, if there's...
Want to wait?
Uh, let me see, thirteen, so clarification, the, we're going to talk...
My, my understanding is, is that we were going to do both the sewer and solid waste, moving them along in this motion. And right now we talked about the sewer, but we haven't talked about the solid waste.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I have been, 218 discussion covered.
I thought it covered both. Did it cover both? Yeah.
I, I think everyone was under the assumption that it was both, but the small meeting was just for wastewater.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Is, is that clear? Council, okay, Councilmember Art?
No, I, I think Chair Louis, Chair of our committee is correct. And I, for one, as a member, would like to see us shut down the sewer side of our committee and simply, if we're going to continue the committee, continue it on solid waste with the notion, with the litigation, with the moving and the re-trimming into the general fund, there are a number of policy and budget issues that in my mind, solid waste is not ready for 218. And...
Well, at least if you say that.
Yeah.
At least more looking and talking about it than we're doing right now at this point in time, right?
Yeah, I mean, the notion is, are we going to link the two and do them as a package or separate them? And I still feel they ought to be separated on different tracks. But the added, the other added item is, as the city manager has pointed out, we have a one-year contract with Plemons, our disposer, and we're still talking about, is that some contract we're happy with? We want to negotiate, what do we do about green waste, et cetera?
Yeah, I, I will go off of that by saying that this was discussed at the committee level. Um, the contract, I've been trying to keep that separate because what the, the rate study is, is looking at current contract and current costs, tipping fee, fuel surcharges, you know, all of that stuff. It is not looking at what the potential of a new contract would be. A new contract would probably be more expensive and higher rates. Um, in, in separating the two, I, I had concerns, obviously the council makes the decision. My concern there would be if we separate the two, um, we may get down to a point where it's, we're, we're looking at a higher rate increase down the road. Where right now we're looking at putting it out together, it's going to be cheaper to put them out together. We have the rate studies. If we're looking at keeping this, there, there's a lot of unanswered questions about separating it as to what that would do to the progression of where we're at currently. But this is time to discuss it.
I would say this chair, that this was a, it was back and forth and so it really does need to be something that the council needs to decide on. So with that in mind, I, I do think that if we wait two more weeks or so to put it on the next one where we could all take a moment to look at it more carefully, I think might be a wise way to go right now.
Well, for the, whoever's running the joint, do we need to keep that committee running? Or can we shrink it down or can we stop it?
My, my view would be that, um, for the time being, unless we want to start looking at green waste down the line or something like that, that we try to make this a, let's get to here and we're done for now and we've got things behind us.
You can always reconstitute it, so I guess...
So if you wanted to close it down, I wouldn't mind that. I mean, it doesn't, if, I think we've accomplished our mission here if we move both of these children along.
Well, actually, it's kind of a big difference. Tell something that's formally adopted, whether it's through the 218 process or otherwise. It's still an open question, you know, if that particular process fails through opposition, we still have the question of what we're going to do with our sewer rates to fund current operations of 218.
Well, we're, sewer rates moved on, we're solving problems.
Solid, solid. So I think wastewater, we're finally moving forward, but solid waste... I think what I'm hearing the concern is, is that our rates could go up based on the next contract negotiation. There's also the discussion of additional services we may need to meet the resident, um, needs as well as state mandates. Um, do we need, let's start with the first question. Do we need the rate study committee to continue to deal with those?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And it sounds like the council...
We, we agreed to a standing committee that has to do with the enterprise, which...
What was the rate study?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
I mean...
There's a finance committee that covers those.
For the water sewer and solid waste enterprise funds, do we have a standing utilities committee? Did we do that or did we?
That would be finance, that would cover.
And we don't have anything separate for it?
No, no. Yeah, I thought we did.
So that's all under finance.
Or it could be public facilities if you wanted to look at it that way too.
Yeah, could be that. Um, City Manager Brannigan, so if we separated them, your, your issue is that we get too far along and then we're not covering the costs that we have. What's the timeframe? What is the last possible, you know, month you would need a decision? Is this something that you need in the next two months?
Well, I would say that depends on when we get direction to proceed with the 218 notice. That's when we'll need to know.
So how about this? Um, what is the council's opinion on moving forward with the wastewater as is? And then in the meantime, get more information on solid waste issues as far as how you would like to proceed, your proposal to us on how you would like to proceed with the contract and making sure that, you know, I think the concern is valid that we're going to put rates in place and then our costs are going to go up and the rates aren't going to take that into account based on the contract negotiation.
But Paul is the...
I would say the, the one key thing that we have to look at is that we don't want to delay too long for solid waste because every day we, we wait, we're, we're bringing the reserve down. On the other hand, um, I, I think that if we waited just for the next meeting and at that next meeting we had the decision points that we want to make, how do we want to do this and this and this? Because I don't think that the committee itself, the task force, could really do much more than we've done. It really is in the, in the hands of the council. So I would recommend that, that we have a, an agenda item on the next one where Pace is, and Mr. Ritter has spelled out the different choices we need to make and then we can look at those discreetly.
And maybe pro con if we wait, well, if we can say that right, if we wait...
I, I would say that, um, I, I don't know what the concern with the contract is. We know we need a new contract. Or we just keep renewing year to year the current contract and we're fine, um, until we get pressure to, to do something different from the state. Um, but so what we, what we have before you with the current study is based off of what the current services are. And going forward, we know what those are with the current contract. Um, doing a new solid waste contract is going to take a long time and going through that process. In the meantime, if we separate these two, waiting for that new contract, uh, the presentation earlier today showed, I think it was a forty percent increase if, if we're going to wait.
Forty-five.
Yeah, so that's, that's a place the council wants to wait and possibly, and that's with the current contract. So if we're looking for more services...
They'll go up.
Down the road, it's going to be maybe double.
Yeah, I think the concern is the current contract, if we go to renew or if we go to talk to Plemons again, is that going to go up? Is that the concern?
Well, the current contract allows for inflationary increases based on the December price index. So it's locked, it's tied to the price index.
Okay.
Yeah.
He looks like he's dying to say something.
I, I, I just wanted to, but it, it, it may be premature to decide whether you want to separate things or not. You can go down the road on both of these issues.
And separate it later.
And, and proceed the way you want to. Uh, understand too that whatever rates you set, that's not necessarily the contract rate. Certainly the concern would be that if your contract rates go up, but what, you could still take a stab at what you think the appropriate rates are. That doesn't, you, you can always charge less than the approved rate. So if you have a ceiling in there, uh, in anticipation of a new contract, you can charge less than that without going through a Prop 218. Prop 218 goes when you enact or extend rates, not reduce them.
I would also like to point out that, um, as much time as we can give the public about these changes that have become, both are necessary. Combining them together so that we're asking them to look at it in one place, I think is far more reasonable than doing it once and then doing it again in a month or two. But combining, asking their attention, focus on it while we're dealing with the issues. I think they're related as junk can play up and always lower rates if we're fortunate enough to be in a position to do so.
So is that a motion to keep them together?
Um, it is.
All right. There's a, there's a motion to keep the wastewater and solid waste together?
Yeah, I'll say it too.
And Councilmember Kreisler has seconded. All right, is there any dissent or discussion on the motion?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay, I'll get to you in a second. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes to keep them combined, so we'll move forward with that. Um, so my understanding now is that what was approved earlier is going to be the same for solid waste except for the small wastewater meeting with the non-residential users, is that correct?
That's how I see it, yeah.
All right.
Madam Mayor, look at the look on his face, I don't think he's...
No, I just need to ask Councilmember Brian if I need my rate study back.
Oh, okay.
I would leave it with him, but I asked Mark to make it for the draft.
Sure.
But I can't live without it.
Can I get a copy?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have all...
Yeah, you should have a copy.
I had sort of a committee, but not enough to go out.
I'll get this one here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's going to be the end. Okay. I know, okay. So, moving on to other new business, we will go to the last item of new business, which is the disaster planning advisory committee, reservation and goals. Would you like to take this or would you like me to roll?
I would like you to roll.
Thank you, okay. So I provided, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
So I provided a memo to the council, basically kind of summarizing what Councilmember Art and I had met about regarding natural disaster planning, the natural disaster task force, the local hazard mitigation plan process that we're in right now. And we basically put together a work plan and we kind of said, okay, what do we hope is the purpose of this committee? What are some goals for 2019, deliverables that need to happen to coordinate those things? Because obviously, there's, natural disaster and man-made disaster planning can involve a lot of stuff. So we want to make sure that if this does end up becoming a council-supported advisory committee, that they stay on track with very well-defined goals. So the city of Dunsmere itself could experience a number of different type of disasters. You know, I mean, we went through the Cantara Loopsville. There's flooding from the Sacramento River, wildfires, et cetera. So we want to make sure, the idea of this committee is that it would be all-purpose. So you can kind of break down disaster, natural disasters into four stages. There's the preparation stage, which is about what is the training of safety staff? What is the training of non-safety staff? What are we communicating to people to prepare for potential disasters? There's mitigation, which is similar to the land vest project that came forward to us. What are we doing to reduce our risk of any type of disaster that's coming forward? There's emergency response, which is really not us at all. Council members don't typically get into the response that goes all over to safety officials. The only thing we really do in that case is declare disaster and then we back away slowly. And finally, the fourth stage of disaster planning is recovery. So how are we going to do that? What are the types of things that need to be in place prior to that happening? That goes into your reimbursement, that can come from the California Office of Emergency Services or FEMA. So that's kind of the areas they could talk about, is the first two and the final. We would rather not have general public members who could be on this committee that's put together advising safety staff on how to do emergency response. We'd like to have professionals do that. So doing the ICS, getting with the incident command system. But, so we kind of sat down and said, okay, we have some proposed 2019 goals for this committee to start working on if it gets instituted. And then on page 92, I provided a resolution for consideration to formally form a standing committee. So, backing up to the general ad hoc standing committee item that we've kind of all been discussing. My general assessment of the situation in Dunsmere is things are not very orderly or well-defined as to what type of committee each committee is, what is their purpose, what is their membership supposed to be? And so this is an example of how I think to properly set up a standing committee proposal. For me, standing committees are those that are operating under the Brown Act. They have to have established agendas that are posted. They have to have a form of the membership, and they are advisory roles that have a role. So if we do go forward with forming this committee, they would not be able to make a decision, run off, and go do that. They would basically make a decision for us to consider, similar to what Planning Commission did regarding the zoning and co text changes. So what the proposal is right now is to, one, name it Disaster Planning Advisory Committee, or DPA for short. And then the purpose is to advise the council on matters related to disaster preparedness, mitigation, and recovery. I did not say natural disaster, just because, again, we do have a railroad in town and there could be issues that happen with that related to safety that could be covered by this. And so, the other thing, too, is goals for this committee will be set by city council and it's in consultation with city staff and then that committee itself. So if this is put in place, when we get to 2020, this committee with city staff would say, this is what we think our 2020 goals should be, and then they're set by council. And then they go off into the world and go do that. Again, it's really important to get into that because you don't want people focusing on high-wind disaster risk when your high risk right now is flooding. You want to make sure they're addressing the needs. Qualifications, pretty much just residing in the 96025 zip code. Maybe a registered voter. You know, we don't want to have this just be people who are in the city limits. We do have the Box Canyon Dam that if it does break, that is considered a disaster. That's covered by this committee and that's outside our city limits. So some people may have an opinion about that a little bit farther upriver than those in the city limits. I'm proposing that the committee be five members who are appointed by the mayor with the consent of city council. The city manager may assign whatever appropriate staff that should attend these meetings. So whether it's the fire chief for wildfire hazards, the sheriff, or any other type of evacuation purposes and preparedness, that would be up to them. They all can show up, it doesn't mean that they can't. It basically means that there is at least one staff member there to assist the committee with providing resources, staff reports, and managing that information. And similar to the public comment that came up earlier about who runs the meeting. So in this case, with the composition of the meeting, so there were our officers who are assigned. So it's very clear that in this case, if this standing committee goes forward, the chair will be one of those public members. And that will be self-selected by the committee every year. So that's on page 93 on eight. So there would be a chair and a vice-chair, you know, it's pretty standard. Other committees have secretaries assigned, I didn't put that in here and I just noticed a typo for the word chair. So, and then they will also be required to take minutes and post those. And just clarifies, meetings have to be consistent. This one, I'm recommending that they meet at least monthly. They can choose to meet more than that and post a special meeting. So similar to us, we are mandated to meet at least twice a month. If we want to meet three times, we can do that. But this one at least sets a minimum standard for how often they're meeting. For example, right now, Councilmember Art and I talked about, maybe we should meet every other week because we want to get ready for fire season as much as possible. So in the future, this committee would take that over and decide that. And then it just kind of goes through, how to remove the officers in form, which is just housekeeping. And then the other nice thing on page 94 is that they would at least report annually to council. So, you know, either in January or February of every year or prior to the budget. Ideally, they would come in, present to council, say, this is how we did on our goals. Here are the goals that we proposed to you, and then here's a budget that we're requesting for these types of activities. So for example, if you take a look at the 2019 proposed goals that Councilmember Art and I came up with on bottom of 96, one of the things that the city of Dunsmere does not have is a local hazard mitigation plan. And that's a really important thing to keep in mind because nationally, if you do not have a LHMP, you are not eligible for FEMA reimbursement. You are also not eligible for certain types of CAL OES reimbursement in cases of declared disasters. So for example, if Sacramento River floods, takes out a couple of houses or ruins some of the water sewer or stormwater infrastructure, you are not eligible at this point to apply for those funds. The city of Dunsmere does have a community wildfire protection plan, which does allow us to get some post-disaster recovery for wildfire, but only from the state of California. FEMA does not recognize that as a hazard mitigation plan. So this is really important that this gets done. And I want to honor the work that City Manager Brannigan and Arlene have been working on to get grant funding as well as information in here to do that. So I would like this group, you know, ideally, the first goal that they're working on is to assist with that. You do have to do, there's some mandates for what's in that plan as well as how many public hearings or public events you have to go for. So this committee would assist with that. And eventually, this committee would be the one making the recommendation to adopt the local hazard mitigation plan through that process. So they themselves would not be, ideally, they wouldn't be writing the plan unless there's a request from staff about history or anything like that. But they would be reviewing it, giving input, and then making recommendations to council.
Question, I thought that we had gotten pretty far along in that process. Hadn't Marishanta and Arlene worked, were you in the process of turning that in recently or not?
Thanks, well, we submitted the application for the planning grant. It is currently under review. So we have not heard yet whether we're getting the grant monies of, what is it, sixteen thousand some odd dollars. And in the items, the tasks that we need to do that are built into that planning grant application, a lot of this is there. Thank you for bringing this forward because, yes, the public input, all the stakeholder involvement is crucial to the success of that plan and the way it'll be reviewed after it's written and submitted to FEMA and OES. And, so I'm all for, you know, this is wonderful, but just remember that any work that, any costs that are incurred by the city for this committee before the grant is awarded cannot be listed as a cost that is reimbursable.
It's only when the grant changes, right?
Yes, correct, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, my understanding was is they're still going for that. It might be a little bit culinary, but not much at this point.
Thanks, I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and so that's kind of number one, we should probably get one of those. The second and third were kind of built upon the concern for wildfire management that the general public has brought up, as well as Councilmember Art and I's assessment of the situation. One of the things is creating a disaster preparedness website, either working, basically, this committee would work with city staff, they're not authorized to go and spend money, but, you know, work with city staff to either identify grants or identify funding sources and try to put together a disaster preparedness website with information, workbooks, and mailers to educate the public on preparedness, focusing first on wildfire and flooding hazards. So ideally, it's just a centralized point where people are going to go to get checklists. There are some that are already pre-made by CAL FIRE and OES. So it might just be just a home base on the city's website or just some kind of information where they can go to those things so that they feel they have the tools to be prepared. So that's the second one. And then third is host an open house in public forums on wildfires specifically to educate the public and organize city response for future wildfire threat. This is in response to Chief Padilla talking about he wanted to host an open house. And so we would like, if this committee is formed, to assist him with that as well as give feedback as what should probably be at that open house. And finally, the other thing here is making sure we have updated floodplain maps and target vulnerable households with preparedness and mitigation information for flooding. The Sacramento River is considered a floodplain where those who are within the floodplain are eligible for flood insurance, so national flood insurance, you have to be within those. Want to make sure, one of the big issues on the planning side at the state level is making sure people are adequately insured for when natural disasters hit. They're basically finding out right now that it's about 90% of the people who lost their homes in fires were underinsured. And so they are having a difficulty rebuilding their homes because they didn't factor in permit pricing, you know, the cost of construction materials going up, the cost of, you know, any of the contractors going up. So it's making sure people know that they're in a floodplain, and this will be something similar to fire, but that they know they're in a floodplain and that, you know, here are their options for insurance. Homeownership is a huge economic factor for counties. And so if people aren't insured and they lose their home, that's a huge, you know, detriment to them that, you know, there's been a lot of planning equity studies on. If you have one generation that loses their house and has no home equity, it's much harder for future generations in that family household to also have homeownership, which is a huge economic indicator. Finally, this is a really general one, is obtain funding for programming and the hiring of hazard planning consultant. This one, we know that Arlene and Mark have been working on getting that grant, but just in case, they would be there to assist with any other additional costs, looking for grants to cover any of these other activities as well. And maybe anything else that would come up is they would assist with that grant writing or, you know, any type of assistance for staff. So that's pretty much what we put together. That was like one of the two minutes of our meeting. But, yeah.
Absolutely, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, sort of to that point. If you want to see what the inside of the mayor's brain looks like. Agenda pages 90 through 97. You and Deanna did almost all of this, and it was a pleasure to be associated with her in getting it to the council this quickly. The only, I have one question for Sheriff Lope, and that is, one of our goals is the disaster preparedness website and how to reach the hard reach, the paradise situation. We have people at the end of the road. Is the county initiative office going to do this anyway? And we can tag on to it, because we need to do our own?
Yes, sir, what I would recommend is we consult with Jason Bella, who's the deputy director for Officer Emergency Services for the county. In fact, we're working on an evacuation plan for Lake Chesapeake. So a lot of these materials already exist. For example, we're, you know, we're getting contracted against the Code Red. We're looking at, you know, the emergency broadcast system. We're looking at geomounting. We're looking at a lot of things, I think, to Dunsmere. Because you, Madam Mayor, you're absolutely right, there are a lot of hazards that could be caused, both natural and man-made. And a lot of those materials and references already exist. You know, for the fire, you know, we came up with some for this latest bout with the Hertz fire and the Delta fires. So I'd be more than happy to, you know, we'll work very closely with the committee. We'll see, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We'll get what we can out of the county. And they use a lot of state OES, and there's a lot of Department of Homeland Security stuff available to do. So we'll help facilitate that for you. And I'll call Jason Bella tomorrow and advise him that you're starting this committee. I'm sure he'll be willing to help.
Well, didn't we, out of last year, get half of the evacuation plan? We got it if it was coming from the south, so it seems really a matter of doing...
Yes, we do, and I think those, a lot of those materials can be used because, you know, they're going to be applicable. Yeah, we could use existing materials and add to them. What do we want to do, what are they wanting to do?
Yeah, well, and so the other thing, too, is ideally, with standing committees, one of the things I have, so the difference between an ad hoc and a standing committee is a standing committee is set up like this, where it's got some rules and policies, and it's very well-defined membership. And it has some of the Brown Act requirements, where the ad hoc is only two members of the city council for a very limited time on a very specific project, and that is not subject to the Brown Act. So they do not have to post their agendas, they do not have to open to the public. And so that's what I want to start getting to, because I don't, I think they've been used interchangeably here. And I would like to start seeing them very well-defined. I would like to start seeing resolutions from each of the committees that we had been assigned to, including the ad hocs, if they're going to continue, to make sure that they're very well-defined. Because I think what we're running into with the issues that we have with the meeting locations is getting us very close to Brown Eye violations. And I would like to not get sued.
Why is that?
Typically, that's typically a good first run-through, jump over. So ideally, I would like to start seeing these types of proposals from the other committees just so that we can be a little bit more kosher about it. And for me, standing committees, I believe, should be five or seven or whatever members of the public. I would rather not have council members on advisory committees for some ethical reasons, just because I don't want there to be a case where a council member pushes their own agenda and becomes a voting member of the advisory committee, votes in favor, and just pushes it through. But as far as, you know, moving forward with this, I think what, the way I foresee my involvement with it is to hopefully get it approved tonight so that we can start advertising for people to get into this. is to hopefully get it approved tonight, so that we can start advertising for people to get into positions. And then Councilmember Art and I just continue in our roles to kind of shepherd it forward and then back off once they're established enough and feel confident to run their meetings and to do that. So this is a general thought process. The other fun thing about this, I don't know if it's fun, but it's just a side note, is that this gets more people involved in the process. This does give people who are super concerned about hazards, regardless of what it is, an avenue to really start participating a lot more with the city. You know, just from, you know, giving public comment is really great, and we appreciate all of that, but then I think there is a constituency that really wants to get involved more and help out with this. And this could be an avenue for them to serve the city in this type of role, so. Are there any other questions, because I will open this up for public comment? Alright, any public comment on the disaster planning advisory committee proposal? Feel free to come up. You got three minutes.
White Mark, I think the fires around here really affected me very personally. I have dozens of friends that lost everything, both the car and campfires. Stories coming from the medical and the law enforcement professionals out of Paradise have me absolutely terrified, because at any given time, that could be us. One of the things that I've been meaning about is Paradise starts to recover and go over everything, is that some of those electronic systems failed completely, and they all said, I wish we had those sirens. And so we, I think we're really beneficial here that we do have some sirens, and so I think making sure that North Dunsmere gets a siren that is functioning, that they can all hear, would be really super important. And then as far as I may be interested in this, if you guys make it up.
Love that.
Yes, thank you. Any other public comment?
So I'm Paris Pethic, and so I'm hosting the Paradise victims who have moved here at my house next week with a few people of our community. They don't know who each other are, and it would be really good for them to become a community here. But I, you know, I just thought to myself, if we recognized what it would be like to be them, and to have city council members that everybody knows, to walk into the grocery store and the library, and all the people that they know, and their entire town is gone, and everybody they know is scattered, and so they don't know where everybody went, they don't even know. So not only should we host them in our town, but one of the things that we had just decided with the Neighborhood Watch was to do a potluck, which Bruce had mentioned that there is a meeting, but it is a potluck at the community center for the entire town to come together.
On the 20th?
On the 20th, and I do have a flyer, and I would like that flyer to go out in different ways, in the newspaper, et cetera, so that it can be really announced. But at that, I just really hope that we could, because I'm going to invite the Paradise people to it as well, that we can kind of mention them, and since it is a Neighborhood Watch, it sort of invokes that whole idea of community, and that we can be, have preparedness, because we all know each other. And so it's not just crime prevention, but it's that putting together of organizations so that we can all come together.
Thank you.
Good job, Paris.
Yay. Are there any other public comments related to this item? Alright, seeing none, we'll come back to discussion. Just a quick point about that too, it would be really, I think, interesting if this, if you guys do institute this, to talk to them about their experiences, because they'll probably have a lot of really good insight on how people feel, how they're gonna respond to things. I think they'd be a very good asset to have. Yeah. So, any other discussion?
May I approve your resolution?
I didn't see you.
I'm ready, good morning. Alright, I move to adopt resolution CCR-19-XX.
I think it's just, I just, it's supposed to insert that number, excited to have it number.
Okay.
So is this 2019?
BO2. O2. O3. We have one, two? You don't need the number, just say my resolution. Okay, according to John Kennedy, the city of Dunsmere authorizing the creation of the disaster planning advisory committee and defining the committee's purpose and parameters. By protocol.
There you go. So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second, please.
And there's a second, any other dissent? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all is in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the committee is created, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have to echo Mr. Art's comments on about this gamble, this is awesome. This is awesome. We think, we think we'll keep you.
Yes.
You know, as a fire patient.
I think I almost got beat up, so.
Alright, thank you. So seeing no other new business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I have one question I need to cover. I just realized that we haven't, as a council, authorized the dates for our meetings. I know we do it every first and third, but usually in December we do that, we come up with a list of the meetings, and we didn't do that this time.
I'd like to be doing the next one.
I would like to note that Julie did give that to me before I was back at, and I'm not ready.
Oh, sure.
I'll get it in the next.
Alright, thank you.
Did he get you through or did he die in the seat?
He was basically just gonna ask about the wastewater free position and hiring, but we have that scheduled for, I believe, the next meeting. Or an upcoming meeting, we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whenever you'd like to have that.
Okay.
But it's a complicated, especially in email.
Yeah, yeah, I took, I took a little bit of a look at it. So we'll, we'll cover that in due time, and we'll make sure that it gets addressed sooner rather than later. Any other items?
Motion to adjourn, adjourn? Motion to adjourn, second, that motion?
Okay, alright, all those in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.